Please game on.
Good makeover.
I guess I should get my notebook out.
Spits and comes from. How you guys all been good?
Good.
Busy.
Busy.
All stop busy.
Trying to beat the rain. Lobbying for some burns.
They go here, yeah.
So I started with it. I'd like to see him make go further in the playoffs this year.
Yeah.
Let's hope.
They got potential, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah. Well, they started to.
Preseason. Starting tonight.
Yes. New York.
Go ahead. We got everybody here but Zeke and Zeke won't be here, so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, dude, I do a lot of Boston games in Boston Garden.
Yeah.
And I always go to the Bruins' parks when they come here.
We'll start with the Chamber report. And I think we've got, yeah. Roy is on Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Well, guess what I want to talk about?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, eat, live, sing and breathe Oktoberfest right now. Um, yes, but Oktoberfest, uh, thank you for all that turned out our first weekend. We, uh, were a bit overwhelmed by the love and support. We had, um, about thirteen hundred people come through the gate last year and had twenty-four hundred come through this first Friday. Nine hundred and ninety-one of those being, um, locals, uh, coming in, uh, Division Street actress. Um. And, uh, yeah, fantastic numbers, great turnout, uh, lots of, lots of families. It's a big night for the Kinder Plots, um, and all that area. Uh, so that was great. Um, it continues to this past weekend, even better success as we were able to, um, course correct on a lot of things before the second weekend. Uh, we have three ambassador groups helping us every weekend. Um, some of you in the room have been helping with those ambassador groups, so thank you, um, for that. Uh, especially in the line, helping people understand if they're in the right line, if they paid or not, what line to be in and all of that. Um, that they can't have vape pens and knives and they will be confiscated, um, like a broken record on some things. Um, the, uh, one thing that, uh, we gauge, uh, that we gauge the success of, um, of Oktoberfest is a low puke factor in our, um. neighboring businesses and I have been told by, uh, as many of my board members, um, Bushel and B, Icicle, others, that the puke factor has been very low. They haven't dealt with a lot of mishaps in their bathrooms or people that had been over served, so they're very happy there. Um, Shuttland County Sheriff Mike Morrison stopped by this past weekend and luckily everybody was on their best behavior when he stopped by. So I think we made a good impression there. Another thing, the shuttle service has been very well, um, utilized, um, kind of surprised at that, um, uh, all day long, people coming and going, um, on that shuttle. So really good to have that. We had two of those in rotation, um, going on, um.
Could you, uh, could you like kind of give us numbers on the shuttle service, like meaning how many people and cost? Cause it might serve as a good pilot reference for the future of a shuttle in Leavenworth, like a, like a full-time shuttle. And I know it's.
The total cost to us, we don't, we don't have any idea of the number. We're not tracking numbers because it's free. Um, and the diver doesn't check, but it costs us, I think, twenty-four thousand dollars for all three weekends.
Great, yeah, that's all I really wanted to know because ours would be free as well. Thank you.
So, yeah, twenty-four thousand divided by six times whatever you need it to be. Um, let's see, uh, uh, big, uh, big line on Saturday, Saturday, we had, um, at noon, um, by the time the person that was counting got to the end of the line and chatting. Uh, we had six hundred people in line at twelve twenty and we opened the box office at twelve. And happily, all those people got in, there was a lot of people frantic that they wouldn't be able to get in, uh, but we were able to get everybody in that was in line at noon into the gate. Um, and then toggling to footballs, um, Saturday, we counted the, uh, third most football falls on Front Street, uh, since we started counting in July of twenty twenty-one. Um, and that was a hundred and fourteen thousand, um, the two days that would fall both above it were the third Saturday of December of twenty-two, followed by the third Saturday of this, in December of twenty-one. And now, um, this past Saturday is our number three, most, uh, most a day and it felt busy, um, hopefully it felt busy everywhere. Um, then also just another thing, uh, the, at the end of this last month, I, uh, signed out thirty-one thousand dollars in checks that went out to all of the nonprofits that were part of the Recreation Ambassador, uh, program over the, um, over the summer. Um, we have Recreation Ambassadors now and we'll be announcing very soon, um, uh, the Christmas Town Ambassador Program. Um, and we have, uh, some more opportunities there for nonprofits. Uh, and we've already been preparing for Christmas Town, uh, we've got maybe some new, um, exciting additions this year to the lineup at the Fest Hall. Um, and, uh, because Lee is also helping us with Oktoberfest and is providing our food service, he is in between weekends decorating, um, the trees already for the holidays, so. So we're getting a bit of a jumpstart on getting things decorated and because of that, he's been inspired. Um, and so we're going to get a little bit more, um, zhuzhing out of him this year because he, uh, wants to do some fancier stuff. So we're all going to benefit from that. Um, and then, um, lastly, our board, we have an election coming up and, um, we do have two seats that need to be filled. Um, so we will be filling those seats for this election cycle, um, and, uh, those elections happen for us the end of November, first of December, um, with the winners announcement in December and that board, um, all hitting reset in January. And that is my update, um, should you have any questions, be happy to field those.
Anybody got questions?
Yeah.
It looks like it's been a very busy Oktoberfest so far, I mean, again, this is all anecdotal and speculation, but do you think you can take any of the? Footballs, any of the interests, uh, from Oktoberfest and kind of extrapolate into what to expect for Christmas lighting? I mean, I, I, anecdotally, and this is reckless speculation for me, I, I'm thinking we're going to get a ton of folks this winter.
Um, there certainly has been more demand of, for this season, I think also there's less confusion, uh, about where the Oktoberfests are and are not happening. Uh, this year, we have had none of, none of that confusion stuff, um, everybody knows what they're buying and that they're in the right town, uh, when they're coming in the door. But the demand has been a lot more, um, in fact, it got to the point where, you know, when we had sold out online, um, our phones just absolutely blew up at the visitor center. Um, people, um, uh, just frantic for tickets, um, and I've, it was, we've all kind of commented on this, this kind of weird phenomenon when I've tried to buy, you know, whatever tickets for whatever Taylor Swift concerts going on. Um, you know, they're sold out. I don't call Ticketmaster and yell at them because the ticket sold out, so it was kind of a weird phenomenon, um, to have that happen, but, um. But yeah, the, the demand is there and we could have sold thousands of more, um, but we, but we, we held it to a capacity that we felt we could hit, that achieves what we need the event to achieve while not, um, overtaxing town. Um, but, but yeah, with, if that, if, if, if the demand for Oktoberfest is similar to what might happen in December, yeah, it will be a very busy, very busy December. One thing I also reported was all of our vendors there too, um, and I think Kevin, are you in the room? I think I see. Yeah, um, all of our vendors reported really great sales, um, and, uh, and we're really surprised at how much that they have done, um, making it actually kind of, um, a lucrative thing to be, um, a vendor at, uh, people things, so. You know, those are just some other anecdotal things to throw in there.
Uh, Troy, have you explored ways to expand Oktoberfest to allow more people in, like make a bigger venue, uh, because that's what it would take, or you just don't want to bring more people into town on those weekends?
I think that way of thinking is why I'm doing Oktoberfest and so no.
Okay. No, no, like, I'm just curious because, um.
Well, it's very easy, it's, it's, it's very easy to say, yeah, because we are in the hospitality business and we always want to serve people and we always want to accommodate, but we don't want to over accommodate. And so, so no, so we want to, I mean, more space would be great, uh, we could use more backup house space and the Kinder Plots area is a bit tight. But ultimately, we, we have what we need, um, and we can work within that, uh, but yeah, it's very easy to say, yeah, more, 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 um, because more is better, but in this case, I don't, I don't think so. As long as we can make our festival that we're throwing sustain itself, um, and do what we needed to do for, um, the businesses, um, and, uh, then I think we're, we're, we're fine where it's at.
Well, so that was my next question, as you said, sustain itself, so is it actually economically balanced or are we putting out money? I remember last year was about a three hundred thousand dollar, um, delta.
Um, I'll have to get back to you on that because all my expenses aren't in.
Right, okay, no, all right.
But, but it's, it's trending to look that way, yes, yeah.
Okay, no, that's great. I was just being kind of, you know, pick the growth and the economic sustainability, exactly like you said, and that's important. Um, have you done any work with feedback with the, with the participants, people coming, are they, do they have surveys to take? Are they saying, hey, this is what we like, this is what I don't like, this has been awesome, this hasn't been?
Um, people are very forthcoming with their opinions. Yeah, survey has not quite been needed yet.
All right, so do you have any of that data, like people like stoked, would they like to see more of something more, you know, curry worst or something?
Um, we've actually just really, we took care of the, some of the things we had last year, but we really haven't had a trend on anything complaint. The biggest complaint was not having tickets.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, that's the biggest complaint we've got.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
I can jump in a more comment, Buck, it broke, and, yeah, bottom of the board, it, I know the, the concept is that first year we had to do it really quickly, definitely small, we added ten, we added more ticket sales, so we're growing. To the point where it's like, we don't go too fast.
Right.
But like, where is that perfect spot?
Yeah.
That makes everybody happy.
Right.
And, you know, so any growth would be always kind of incremental.
Yep.
Um, we're starting to find some sweet spots and we're, I mean, learning a lot, it's, it's kind of going into a lot of detail, the Chamber staff has done incredible job of feedback on, you know, it, it, those who came on Friday with the, the lines and all that stuff, it was like virtually. Salt Friday, the second Friday, I, my little booth is in front of the ticket stand there and there was no line longer than five or six people deep all day long. So the deficiencies, you know, the, the Chambers learning at rapid speed, I, I'll make it better, so.
Well, I appreciate Troy's criteria for saying, where's the sweet spot? No, we don't want to grow anymore. Um, I was just curious about like, we're like beyond downtown, if there was even considerations of expanding. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
We're just trying to survive this year, I think.
No, that's fine, like I, I, when you say there's thousands of people who want to come, that's always kind of sparks my interest as a business owner and saying, hey, yeah. But I totally appreciate where you're coming from and saying, we are at a comfortable spot and I respect that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're at the spot where we've created, we feel like with, with the demand, uh, where we toggle to is leavenworth.org slash calendar, please go there, please understand all the things that you can do in town. Because so many of our Chamber members and the, uh, partner businesses are, are throwing parties, have live music, have other events people can do. And actually, the Oktoberfest celebration isn't everyone's cup of tea, um, somebody would rather have more of an intimate like concert at Meechan House or down at Doghouse. So really talking about sharing that, um, that demand with the rest of town, um, and, and being able to go around town. I mean, we have some amazing thing, we have Alpines walking around playing, um, we have, um, you know, a band, a, a four brass band walking around playing and just entertaining all around town. So, you know, that's the kind of vibe that we kind of want to keep fostering.
Right, and to be clear, also, all those people that were, it basically, I, I don't know, very, very few people came to town and they were, they got in. You, you had been in line and wait and those people that were anxious got in line, I mean, there was not a ton of people, even a handful of people that did not get tickets, so they didn't want to wait in line. I even had D back them and they were, they ended up having a great time throughout town, so.
Yeah.
Still are getting everybody in, and so the Chief is definitely aware about the marketing thing about, we don't want to necessarily say, oh, sold out dot com.
Right.
You know, because then at the same time.
That's a much, that's a great answer, thanks, yeah, because I was looking at.
Easily aware, like, the image we're putting, we're constantly kind of figure that out.
Right, and there were people again that weren't inside, that were still enjoying the music and the thing downtown and, you know, so it, it again, uh, fulfilled the, the idea of getting the whole town involved in it and not. Again, just at the one end of town and so that.
Exactly, the, the beer sign con- competition, you can watch it from the front street, even if you go, you're not in the street park zone.
Yeah, right.
Things like that were, you know, that you could get a lot of festival free.
It still amazes me how many, because I was one of the line checkers that did, um, for the last couple of weekends, I did a spin. And it still amazes me how many people came to Leavenworth because they wanted to come to Leavenworth and had no clue it was Oktoberfest. I mean, how do you miss that? But it's amazing, they did, they showed up, um, what is this? Why can't I walk through, uh, you know? Anyway, aside.
Noodles.
Yeah. Like what the heck was going on? All right. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thanks Troy.
Moving on, recycling center, downtown recycling and Big Belly Trash Cans.
All right, I'll just take a quick moment to introduce this topic, thank you Mayor Corey, council members, good evening. Uh, this topic before you this evening is, is, uh, associated with our recycling operations, so Andy's going to give a presentation, supported by John Chant, our Parks Division Supervisor, uh, regarding downtown recycling and trash operations. Uh, we are going to touch on the recycling center, but first we're going to focus on the downtown and Big Belly, uh, proposal that Andy, John Chant and Grant Hennig have been working on. I do want to acknowledge their efforts, they put in a lot of time and research and ask and evaluating the resources it takes internally to, to, uh, evaluate what we currently do versus what we, what Big Belly can provide. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy, thank you.
Right, myself, um, so I've put together this little PowerPoint just as a, the your presentation and I don't know where to stand here. But John's here also to answer questions, um, is that quicker for me?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, awesome, even better. Uh, so like I mentioned, first I just want to quickly touch on our current operations, then we'll talk about the Big Belly bins that we're proposing for the downtown. Um, then we'll get into what I'm calling additional considerations, so these are compost recycle, other alternatives that we have to add on to the Big Belly bins that we're looking at down there. And then Tom will give a quick recycle center update. Um, so, so right now, there's actually quite a substantial amount of resources that are put towards the solid waste collection in the downtown core. And we put together this figure just to kind of better, uh, show what this actually looks like. So this is our current required labor, uh, and it's split between two divisions, so Rick's crew, the Streets and Utilities crew goes through in the morning. And this is in person hours, what I called it, so essentially this is two people for an hour each morning, they go around each of the bins, even down around the floor. And, um, they're visually inspecting, if the bag is fifty percent full, dog, please grab me, but a bin that's fifty percent full, um, build, pull it and then rewind, or I think they've already locked, so they'll just pull the bag, um, and move on to the next one. So that, four days of the week, um, takes two people an hour per day in the morning. And then on Thursdays, his crew, it's four people for two hours, they go through and place multiple liners in the bins. So that when it's busy or on these other mornings, they can just come in and pull a bin and don't have to rewind. Um, and so it takes a substantial amount of time for his crew to do that, then his weekend person comes in and goes through the long person, takes about an hour and a half, immediately inspects all the bins. And then John's through the Parks Department throughout the day, um, Jared, who supports the downtown core, spends, what do you say, like, uh, three to five hours a day. Uh, five days a week, going through and again, inspecting cans and then pulling, pulling bags as we do, so. You know, we're estimating that this currently totals thirty-nine hours per week that someone is down there, uh, managing these bins. And so with this in mind, we're, we're trying to move to a more proactive versus reactive mode in a moment. And so we've identified this as one of our inefficiencies, it takes a lot of time for all these crews to actually, you know, keep our downtown core clean. And so we started exploring, uh, Big Belly upstairs, so. I, my understanding is historically, this has previously been talked about in the city, uh, and from my understanding, John and Rick, it was determined to be economically inefficient at that time, uh, and, and again, John, please step in.
John, I saw it well, so the first time, I think, I don't remember if it was Parks Committee or Public Works Committee, but you guys looked into doing a pilot project, they are a pilot board and. You get what you guys want to do, Big Belly didn't make any calls any time, so that's why it happened the first time, the second, it was a little bit.
Excuse me.
And, and so now they've kind of refined their price models, they, they have different models of bins, you can kind of tailor each of the bins to serve on each better. So that's why they have gone back and we're not evaluating this as we kind of reevaluate efficiencies in the department. Uh, so a lot of you are not because, it sounds like maybe you kind of remember this is.
Before my time, but I agree with it a hundred percent.
Perfect.
Do they still have one at, um, Park and Ride? I think that's what we've investigated.
That's links and they do, they have them. And I'll get into that, but we actually had a meeting that then talked about, uh, their perception of it and the reason that they don't think that is. Um, so what we're looking at with these bins is compact bin bins, and so that ultimately, uh, will have three times the space that we do in our current bins. And then on top of that, uh, we also have, I tried to kind of show it in this picture, but these have, uh, a liner that sits inside that we can open, open the door, wheel this out, and then this can be picked up with our automated, uh, garbage truck. Right now, it's actually people manually pulling these bags, um, so it's an option that would.
No liners on those?
Line.
Liner, sorry, this is just a picture that shows, and I, maybe I, I'm not well versed in this, but I'm calling this a liner and the other actual bag, a bag.
Okay, thank you.
So that would be the bag.
A bin, okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Bin and bag.
Yeah, you know, that helps because, um, with these things, I'm not a big fan of liners, bags, this is what I love to see is a reusable bin that can just be dumped.
So, I'm hard to clarify, yeah, this is, just a picture I stole online, so this is, this is the thing, well, they didn't have the bag here, our intention is still have, to have the bags and they recommend that and require that with the compactor.
Oh, interesting.
Or can we get three times or to four times as much, you know, debris in on that?
Okay, yeah, okay, I get it, okay, so the bag does help with efficiency, that's good to know, thank you.
And, and more than just help, I, I believe that we actually need it otherwise, we're going to need to get back in here, please, more often, and then we have potential issues with the compactor.
Okay, that's fair, yeah.
Um. So, so in the workload, these, we can reduce the man hours, reduce the inspection, uh, you know, where people are going through and actually checking them more often. Uh, on top of that, we can also eliminate that eight hours that Rick's crew spends on those days lining these, because we're not going to be pulling the, the liner here as often. This would be like, oh, you know, put one in and take one out kind of drill, uh, and then, like I also mentioned, these will work with our automated garbage truck. And so this now is not someone actually going in and putting this bag out, we're supposed to. Uh, so as, as John mentioned, you guys previously looked at, they used to have just one model, and so now they have, um, the Sense and the Smart, which is two of their different lines. And so the kind, the cool thing about these bins, uh, in relation to our specific system, is that we can couple the Smart with the Sense, and so the Smart bins, uh, have a level sensor in them and they will send us a notification when they've reached whatever percent max we want them to notify us of. But that's a more expensive bin, and so we work with the company and ultimately, you know, our crews know the bins that historically are more cold than a base. And so what our intention is, is we'll strategically place the Smart bins that report back to us and then have all the rest of the bins not have the communication capacity or capability. Instead, they would all be compact bins, so they should be, you know, around the same level, but then we have this indicator bins so that our staff doesn't need to go down and continuously check and see if these things are full. Uh, so, jumping into the house of these, um, oh, just kidding. So we were, we were forecasting that with the crew, um, and the number of hours that would be spent, it would be eight hours versus the current, around thirty-nine, so yes, to be spent in the downtown core. Uh, so we have mostly two different options with Big Belly, one is the capital purchase, which if you can't see this, it's three hundred eighty-seven thousand is what we show right here. And so this is for ten of the Smart bins and forty-five of the Sense bins, um, so all compacting units. And then, um, the other option that they have is the rental, they have a program, um, and so on here, it is listed, the initial cost is just the, it should be, you know, thirteen grand, but about a monthly cost of five thousand six hundred dollars. This is, the, the rental price is for an eight-year term, um, and what really attracted us to this option is that this includes the installation, annual cleaning and inspection, and then ongoing servicing for eight years. And so just knowing that this is a newer technology and their solar power, this ultimately puts the responsibility back on them in the contract to maintain these bins, they have a service provider in the area, so if we do run into any issues, um, it's on them to pack up.
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
Andy, what would the Reynolds Connect Program be at the end of the eight-year term total?
Like, what are our options?
Yeah, no, well, uh, eight times twelve, times fifty-six.
Close to double.
Close to double the capital.
Double.
This first.
Yeah, we're shooting three hundred.
First. Quite a savings to buy all.
Yeah, so even the monthly sounds like it's the capital purchase, it makes it worth it to not spend the labor, labors you've around other four thousand bucks a month, if I've just.
Yeah, so that's actually what I was going to get to as well, so our, the, a lot of savings, but it's a really a reallocation of resources. When salary, whatever, we estimate that it's seventy-three hundred dollars a month that would be, that, that would be saved.
Oh. Oh, so that was a little off, yeah, so that's good, yeah, I mean, the capital purchase makes more sense.
And I, I will say that in the conversations we've had, our staff's biggest concern with doing the capital purchase is just the ongoing upkeep of these, and if we do have issues here, um, you know, one of the things that they said that you can occasionally run into a issue, because if someone stuffs. Like a, a pizza box in one of the compact bins and then we need to like go do some repair work on the compacting mechanism, so if we have the capital purchase and we own those bins, then that's on us. But even an issue like that in the rental program, then they have their service provider out, and so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's not rocket science, you guys could probably figure these out and they've been around for a while, right?
They have been around for a while, but so, so the bins are, are new, we're like, they're, they're smart racks, you know, there's a newer, newer technology, um, so. But this comes with installation, so we wouldn't have to do any installation and, and then we would have an option to purchase it.
Oh. Do you have the option to get a different size?
Fifty-six hundred dollars.
Holes defeated, so your pizza box can go in?
We do, we do, and we actually have quite a bit of flexibility, um, I don't know what that is.
Yeah.
Um, so this one kind of shows, but the pricing that we included is all the, like, they basically told them, give us all of your most expensive options that we can go through so that we can bring that costume. Um, so both the capital purchase and the rental program includes their, you know, custom wrap or whatever we want that to have, this picture doesn't show it, but they also have like, uh, messaging boards that you can put on the side, um. I don't think that we probably want to do this here, but we also have like the foot pegs and you can have like a hopper versus a chute, so you can actually get into the bin, uh, there's a lot of options, but again, you just said, tell, like, pick all the options that are the most expensive, give us that number and we'll define from there, um.
And are they relatively bear-proof to, you've talked about the bear part?
Yeah.
Okay, they're totally bear, that's good, okay.
I mean, if you got one of the open face ones, then yeah, maybe, did their barn, but like this time, yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, it's like the, uh, like the post office thing, you know, where you drop the clothes in order for it to go in.
Yeah, yeah.
And sorry, I don't remember if it was a hopper or a chute.
Yeah, that's fine.
But anyways. Yeah.
Oh, sure, I'll turn this first.
Oh, um, you said something about solar?
Yeah, yeah, so they are solar powered and I think, uh, the compact units are, and they only need sunlight, it's like every Friday, there's six a day.
Every what day?
Fifth or sixth day, they have a battery. Fifth or sixth day. They have a battery.
And what's the lifespan or battery?
It's pretty substantial. And and that was one of the things we talked to them about, like it's our climate location, you know, specific bin locations. If this would be a concern. Uh and and we don't feel concerned about it just based off the battery data they shared with us. And I don't remember this.
And and the locations that they have, they'll.
Yeah.
They have similar.
Yes, um yes.
So I'd be curious, you you projected thirty nine hours a week. So assume like a full time employees. Full time employee basically for garbage removal a year would be. What, eighty thousand dollars a year, ninety thousand dollars a year for an average full time employee? And then this would be about. Three orders less than that. So that I'd like to kind of know. You know what I'm saying? I'm looking at the cost savings and labor. I'd like to kind of quantify that.
You know, we count that up to be around seventy three hundred dollars a month savings. It's over here.
Oh, sorry. Oh, geez, right, right. Okay.
Of the the reduction in thirty one hours. So.
Thank you for that. Oops.
Which actually looks pretty good with the rental program and not having the problems with.
Yeah.
Would we do a solar test for like a month? In the winter?
In December?
When we don't get very much sun.
To be like, hey, like doing quizzes after a week. And they were, I think it was, now I'm done myself, but I've looked back. It was like ten, maybe it was like ten days that even if they're covered in snow for ten days, the battery life of them would be substantial.
And I'm sure they have pilots or or just case studies for them up in Vale or or somewhere.
And if it's Alaska, they have bins in various places that have.
I'm sure that would have come out in the wash by.
Sounds like the parking meters.
Oh, so we thought uh.
And then also on part of this, we did actually meet with Link because they do have bins around. And they absolutely rate it. They are so excited to get more. Uh. I know they, you know, for them in particular, they have remote locations and they use the sense max that actually for the the smarts that alerts them. And they were saying that they're looking for something in more locations. And we just had a really honest conversation with their facility supervisor. Asked for a review back and that's all about.
Are the bins secured so that someone can't just pick up and lock off with one?
Yeah, they are. So part of the install, um they they have the option to like secure them to the concrete. So that was one of the things that we've talked about, you know, with eventually renewing time series, probably for now, just. Based off the existing condition of the road down there or the sidewalk, we probably wouldn't have them drilled in place for now, but we'd do that. Sure.
I was thinking if you put a wrap on a very pretty wrap with a tree in the bear or what have you, somebody might think, oh, that'd be cute in my yard.
I don't think they'd be very easy to remove.
I like the rental program personally. Yeah. Big fan of the purchase.
We could always do the rental for a term, eight years, unfortunately.
Again, we just picked. Long, long term here, like how's this look?
It was the shortest from two or three recent times.
Yeah, I think it was maybe three, five, eight.
But there was some.
Yeah, I looked back at my notes from twenty eight, so when we were doing this and we backed out because it was a five year commitment.
Yeah, I think they had a lot of people walk away, so they kind of restructured everything.
Well, two year trial run sounds pretty reasonable.
Yeah, two year trial run with the option to renew.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
I think that would give us an idea of what their actual warranty is out to be.
Yeah.
They're not going to be perfect. So it would be great to know, you know, within a two year trial period. Kind of how how it is to work with them and how quickly they come and fix things and. What the actual lifespan of one of these things is potentially, so.
Well, they've been around for how long? At least twenty years, right?
Well, we looked at them in eighteen and they were a couple of years old.
Okay, enough. I've seen him around for a lot, like in big cities. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's where I've seen him, airports and outdoor, a lot of places. So I just know they have a track record and I'm sure they've been through R and D and. You know, and you will like, oh, let's fix that. That keeps breaking all the time.
So Philadelphia implemented in the back two thousand nine.
Thank you. Okay.
You mentioned that our garbage trucks can can empty these.
Yeah, but somebody's to pull the bin out.
Oh, okay. So there's.
That's it. It costs us a little, like a tiny bit extra to get the the modification to the pen because normally they're not meant to be picked up by an automated truck. So. But that is in for the hard price, but it's not up to a standard volume.
Yeah, yeah, we like upgraded the.
And you're sort of the fifty gallon, not the hundred and fifty gallon models?
I really like the cost savings and the saved labor.
Yeah, because we definitely use that extra labor for implementing command of means sometimes.
Well, yeah, being able to put those people to work somewhere else, I'm sure that you could definitely use the body, the bodies of the time, the thirty nine hours. Um. And I mean, based on the projected savings that you guys calculated out, it's almost nineteen thousand dollars a year in savings, which is great.
And could these be future used for also for uh recycling?
Yes, that is the next portion that I want to talk about.
Never mind, helping you out, I guess.
So in this process, we've also been talking about the potential to also to be clear, like the garbage is our top priority right now. Uh in addition to that, we also want to talk about these additional considerations. Uh so compost and recycle. Uh so compost, we actually met with Linton and I don't have, I don't have costs. For you at this point, but we we talked to them about the potential of having a waste station that that would be like this, where we have garbage, compost. And if recycle is feasible, recycle next to it. And so it's clear messaging to people which bins things go in. And we would never have a standalone compost compost bin where someone is just going to throw their trash into it. And, you know, need to hire all this contamination. But it sounds like uh from the conversations that we've had with Linton, we could have a path forward with them. Where they're responsible for the compost collection from these bins. So we would be responsible to buy the bins. Have them in the downtown core and then they would come through and be responsible for all of the collection. And then obviously disposal of all of compost. As well.
Would they charge a fee for that?
Okay.
Okay. So it's kind of weird.
But we're not hauling it, so that's nice.
Right, but they charge a fee to collect and charge a fee to sell their stuff.
It's like waste management.
Yeah, but we don't buy our garbage back.
Doesn't matter.
No, but compost. Yeah, I get it. I get it. I'm just curious. I would love to see something like this down by the restrooms, even if we have one location where. The tourists really want to recycle, like a centralized location for starters.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been working with Ariana to get a pilot project put together for downtown recycling. But obviously that would. Take a backseat, but if we expedited the Big Valley operation, we could put a couple of those recycling. Bins and and evaluate contamination.
Let's definitely try to do that with this order. I'm sure there's. Cost savings, the more you purchase in order of magnitude.
Yeah, so we we think we'll give a a path forward with compost. Um again, I think we want to investigate that a little bit more and have hard numbers before we make a decision on. Bins for compost. And that would also start out probably as a test where we have a couple of bins, put them in garbage bins and and see what contamination looks like. Um but recycle, like Tom mentioned, we definitely want to do more of a pilot study. So in talking with. John, it sounds like it was um between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen in that in that time period. Uh we did have recycled bins in the downtown core and there was substantial contamination. So as. If there was a handful of times that that ever actually was recycled. Uh and typically just ended up getting multiple landfill because there was so much contamination in that.
Yeah.
Um so we really want to do this pilot study. One, to be sure that our messaging can actually influence how people are disposing of the waste and putting it in the right bin. Because it's truthfully not worth our time or money to buy bins and have staff go through and collect it. It's just going to go to the way the landfill and say, so. So that's where we're wanting to do a pilot program before we.
And I read an update on one of those recycling magazines. I get an email about it. That the biggest part of the contamination in recycling is the paper-ish products like. Ice cream containers and other things. And so they're making most of those now uh compostable.
Yeah.
So that separates them out of the recycling stream. And so like clearly it's compostable, so you put it in compost, but like. Clear plastic beverage containers generally not contaminated, right? Even if it's got a little juice left in it, it's still okay. And then like glass, obviously, which is kind of a separate stream. And then aluminum cans, right? So once you can get the paper out of the stream and make it all compostable, you've essentially eliminated most of your contamination. Cool glass. Cool glass is its own thing, right? Yeah. Right, and Ariana probably has a solution to this, right?
More discussion to come there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Now I.
Specifically contamination, more than just that, like talking about like diapers and just. Garbage that's been thrown in this. Yeah.
Right.
Like it is a lot more than just putting the wrong number of plastic in or, you know, a paper that is not, it is a lot.
That's human behavior problem issue. I get it. Yeah.
So I I meant to state this in intro, I apologize. But we have now in the last year, a year ago, we implemented, because historically we only collect the cardboard one day a week. Now we collect cardboard seven days a week.
Oh.
And great, and there's that much of a demand for cardboard downtown core. And when we take it down to nickel sense, they're so sensitive about contamination that our staff actually has to pick the garbage out of the cardboard when it's contaminated. And it's time consuming. So contamination is will be an ongoing battle, but as Andy indicated, messaging is perhaps a the best tool for that.
Yeah, that's where like I've seen cardboard, like pizza boxes are much better as compostable than they are recyclable.
Andy, have a question?
Yeah.
If we get into the lease program. Can you up the amount of bands or reduce the amount of bands to see where we fall within that lease parameter? Or do you have to commit to X amount and we're whether we use whole?
So you're asking if once we're in that lease period, we can modify the number of bins? I don't have the details on that, but I can.
In and out. Okay.
You mentioned it, the pilot projects. What's your thoughts on number of bins for the pilot?
Uh so the pilot is specifically for compost and recycle. Our intention is not to have a be pilot or, you know, if we have. Uh a shorter period of lease period, I guess it would consider a pilot, but we could do that for the garbage. Uh. And so we have ten of the smart bins and forty five of the uh sense bins.
For garbage, yeah.
All for garbage, all that's for garbage. Yeah. And that's all the pricing that I have there was just those fifty five bins. Any other questions before, did you, was that your last you said?
No, we're just, I know we're getting, we're going a long on time here, but just brief recycle center update, two updates. We're working with Ariana currently on updating the signage for the recycling center. To make it more clear, particularly with yard gate, waste being residential only. Uh and that sort of thing. And regarding yard waste, we are exploring. Um so for example, we are going to partner with Linton for our yard waste cleanup. So instead of stockpiling the yard waste at the cemetery, we're going to remove the yard waste right away. So. We're looking at expanding some of the operational yard waste uh. Capabilities with partnering with.
But why aren't we bringing our yard waste to the Shaland County Waste?
Apple maggot.
I know, but that's where you bring it for that. In other words, I can't bring my yard waste to the dump because it's got apple maggot.
Right.
Quarantine, but that's why you go to the.
Well, but then they're hauling it up to win.
Yeah, they're merging.
They're they're charging there and then hauling it to win.
And they burn it.
Right, but they they chip it or they they kind of compact it, don't they? Or they burn it.
Tough grinder and they grind it. And I don't, I don't know. I don't know if Shaland County would allow a kind of a commercial type of operation with if we.
It would be us as a municipality, not commercial. So it'd be great to partner with them and say, hey, can we just bring it all there? They process it anyway. And they have one guy every Friday, but obviously.
Right. It would certainly charge.
Yeah, I mean, being a municipality, I'm sure we could have a discussion with other county. So I know the commissioners love us. I was facetious, sorry. But yeah, okay, just curious because.
That's a great question. I don't, I don't have an answer, but we.
Yeah, it's just they're right there and they have, they they seem to have some kind of process stream. I bring, I bring trees there all the time. And so, because they won't let me bring them to there or I have to chip them or whatever. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for preparing that, Andy. That was awesome.
Yeah.
All right. You've got a rate fee schedule.
Go ahead and start this one.
Me too.
Council, I was looking at the draft resolution that was put in your packet and. I see that some of the red lines that are in there by staff, particularly it looks like the development section. Are very difficult to see in the print version. I don't know if it's easier if you have the electronic version. But the coloring was so dark. So um not to be too concerned, no, we're not. This is not our last conversation. We're going to be looking at this probably monthly until we adopt in December. Tonight, though, we definitely are looking for direction on how you guys want us to move forward with the rates on utilities. Water, sewer, stormwater and garbage. As I noted in the write up for you, I presented you with what we incorporated in the budget. Also, this evening, you're you are passing the HDR, hopefully. Contract for the rate study that is going to happen next year. And then that will give us our recommendation score twenty twenty five. So tonight. We'll take your comments on whatever you see in here or whatever you would like to like us to amend.
Looking at. The fee schedule for commercial water rates and residential water rates. Am I looking at this wrong or is it backwards in here?
Is it backwards? Is that what you said?
Yeah, residential rate for three quarter meter is seventy three sixty eight.
What page do you have?
I don't have a page. Just.
Oh.
And then the commercial three quarter inch is forty three bucks.
That does look backwards.
So I. Page numbers are at the bottom of the document.
In the middle.
Oh, I see it.
Okay.
Where's my glasses?
That point thirteen and fourteen?
Yeah.
So what residential water rate, three quarter inch, forty three sixty eight, commercial three quarter meter, forty three thirty one.
That is not wrong.
Okay.
It is because commercial actually gets hit harder on the usage side.
Side. Okay, when they read the meter.
So in our last rate study. That, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into equity here. And so base rates were determined to be needed less on commercial accounts. In order to hit them harder when usage rates.
When you read the meter, okay. Cause it didn't quite explain that here. I'm looking at go.
It does not in our rate free schedule. You have to read the rate study itself, which, you know, that was five years ago. But it's another hundred page document to read through because. They go into a very specific study. And Tom, do you want to talk just for a minute about what we've tasked HDR with to do?
Yeah, we're in particular, I'll give you a little highlight of this evening. I'll just, again, these are the highlights, particularly water. So uh HR is going to focus on a more conservation based rate structure for water. Um and that is to obviously promote water conservation. So perhaps it could look like you're paid for use and that seventy five hundred. Will be explored. We're going to explore taking that away. Obviously, there'll be examples and and great, you know, different structures.
So go just to read and call it.
Yeah, that could be one example. So whatever they recommend for a more conservation based rate structure, right? Whatever best practice is, we don't know if that works like that. And secondly, the biggest item, second biggest item is system development charges. System development charges were last updated two thousand eight. They were checked in two thousand eleven and they were found to be adequate, but nonetheless, and those are what. Those are the buying fees by developers. So that actually goes towards capital projects. So we ensure that those are current. Uh and then uh and then generally speaking. Council relax, going to your point about commercial versus residential, the intent there is to make sure that the rates are equitable. So. And they may look like this in the upcoming race. I do, we don't know, but there as Chantel indicated, there'll be an explanation.
Yeah, cause if I look at the one inch meter. They're within a dollar roughly, not quite, but versus that big discrepancy between three quarter inch.
Yeah, our last council specifically showed that the three quarter and the one inch meter on residential be the same rate. On the last rate study. They felt that even though the meter was bigger. People were still using the same amount of water, you know, we're still charging for the gallons. So they didn't feel that that needed to be a discrepancy.
Pod.
I know. Cause that was the first time I'd seen that too. Uh one other thing we're going to be asking in the scenarios that HR is going to be doing is. Removal of the seventy five hundred gallons.
Basically, right.
Correct. And so looking at the base rate, which will likely go down slightly for folks. But then they'll be charged from zero forward on the usage that we've been giving them that first seventy five hundred gallons for.
Let's make your budgeting interesting.
Well, this is why we hire HDR, actually, uh, you know, we've had them the last two times, and in twelve years, they have been spot on with their recommendations versus my budgeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's a complicated process, and they will be given presentations to you guys in twenty twenty-four. So, tonight, though, we just need some direction, would you like us to proceed? Because it's a lot of work to go in here and manipulate and change all of these numbers. Do you want us to proceed with what was planned in the budget?
Well, I noticed that, and I have one quick question, is there a specific algorithm you use to increase? Is it based on COLA, or how, how do you actually gauge how much to increase, or is it based on um, sustainability of our econ- economy, this, like, the economics of this?
I cannot answer that question, because there are a lot of factors that go into each one of the different utilities.
Okay.
Where did we come up with these particular ones? Chantel eliminated the zero percent on the sewer.
Okay.
Because we had a large reserve, and we knew that the sewer fund could afford to not have new revenue coming in.
Yeah, so that was economically based, thank you. That actually helps answer my question. I just didn't know about the others, about the permitting and the design review and all that, like, and I get it, those people spend time looking at these documents, there just, there needs to be some kind of equitable compensation. Sorry, sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I just was like, is there like a rule of thumb we use?
No, because what they do is they put together an entire six-year plan for us, and they meet with Tom and I, and we go over every capital improvement in each one of them. We go over every operation and maintenance line item in each one of them, and we determine what does the fund need from year to year to year, if, if everything happened as planned.
Yeah.
What is needed to make it all work? Including borrowing money and the bigger funds, the water in the sewer for debt payments, you know, all of those things get factored in. And then they spit out some magical revenue number, and here's what you have to increase. And you will see when they do the study that you may have a rate of three percent one year, but only two percent another year, but then you might need five percent this year in one particular fund. It, it is all driven by the O and M and the debt and the capital.
Okay.
So, Tom, when you have, if you eliminate the seventy-five hundred gallons base rate, will you be able to, will you have a better handle on capacity and what's really gonna be needed in highs and lows? As far as what's gotta go through the treatment plan?
Right, so despite having that base rate, you know, I have the seventy-five hundred gallons, we have consumption data, actual consumption data, so we will be able to project what that would look like.
And it'll be.
Yeah, one thing we noticed with.
On your end.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
One thing you'll notice when, when you start lowering that, when we went from fifteen thousand to seventy-five hundred, our fear was people would u- use less water. That wasn't reality. So, we don't think people will use less water, if we go to zero either. There might be a few that will learn to conserve, because they know they're being charged by a thousand gallons. But for the most part, people will continue to do what they normally do.
Sure.
And those who only use three or four thousand dollars a month, single-family person living all by themselves,
Yeah, a dollar.
might haven't even known, then, what, and, and that's been a huge pain.
Yeah.
Since I started working here.
Right.
Why are you giving me this large gallon usage in my base rate, if I don't even use that water?
I think it's, if you just meter the water, it's fair for everybody.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, and there's history on that, and you know the history. It was about dripping faucets in the winter for freezing pipes and all of that.
Yeah, there was a guy that came in one time, and he lived in a house by himself, but he had his wife and two kids on the other side. I'll never forget this, and he was trying to get his point across that he was subsid, we were, he was subsidizing us because there was only one person in the house.
Yeah.
And he wasn't using the water that I would use, or somebody with more people in the house, they just, but he had a bottle of water in his hand. And I asked him, I said, what did you pay for that? He goes, a dollar fifty, I said, you could have bought a thousand gallons of the water from the city for that. And just walked out the door.
Yeah, and it's weird how sometimes you guys go cubic feet, and other times you go gallons.
So, our new system.
Thank you, no, that's fine, I'm not.
With cubic feet.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and when you guys calculate sewage fees or wastewater, is it a percentage of the overall water coming in, or how does that work?
So, for sewer, on the residential side, it's a flat sheet.
Okay.
On the commercial side, it is based on their previous year's water use through a twelve-month period. I think it's October through September.
So, is it a direct correlation, or is, I guess it's just the amount, it's a, it's a direct?
Yeah, they, they use it based on a equivalent residential unit, ERU.
Okay, I remember those.
And that's a standard practice for sewer rates.
It sure is.
It's in here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I, I glanced over it, and I was curious what the, if there was a percentage, because there's always losses, like, you're not, everything you take in doesn't always go to wastewater. But, we need to cover our costs, because we're about to build a new one.
I'm comfortable with the proposed, uh, rate changes, uh, associated with the budget.
Me too.
Yeah, after my questions. Same here.
Perfect, thank you.
I just needed to deliberate.
Have anybody heard from Z? He's, he's, he's volunteering.
He's a student, he can't.
Hold it, hold it.
Changes the parking tonight.
Here, we knew it.
Yeah, I can. So, separate from utilities, do you guys have any other questions about anything? Or do you have any requests or recommendations that we should look into? We are gonna look at things like test talk, who needs twenty twenty-five rates embedded? I know that one hasn't been done yet. Um, Tom, are we gonna look at cemetery?
We just did a cemetery update, um, we'll probably do at least like a COLA model.
For cemetery.
Yeah.
Um, no, and I mean, we're still, uh, the meters are all new, everything's been replaced.
The water meters?
Yeah.
Please show that a few.
Done deal, okay.
Yeah, they're very, very small.
Yeah, that's not really not.
Two hikers left. Perfect.
Yeah, I, I reviewed all the city's accounts, and I think I found two that weren't reading yet, and I asked Shirley to reach out to the Public Works crew.
Yeah.
At least of our city accounts. All right.
And we won't see this rate and fee for final approval until December, right?
Correct, so, thank you for the direction tonight on utilities, I will work on getting all of that incorporated, and Tom will probably look at the other pieces in his utility funds, and other, like, general services, parking, will.
We've made some changes.
Will be one to be looked at and incorporated. Uh, we are going to have this at your next study session, first meeting in November, I believe. And then, if we need to, we can put more time in the second one, if you think we need to. But if not, then it will be the first meeting in December, that it will be before you for approval. If you think of anything or have any questions, by all means, reach out to me, or it's utility-related, you can reach out to me or Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, sure. Onto the project tracker.
Thank you. So, I'm sure.
Of everything, so.
Thank you.
What, Carlos? Let me give you your.
I just take questions if there are questions. This is just informational for Council.
Yes, I'll be there.
Questions? This is something you see every quarter, so.
What are we, where are we now?
Project tracker.
Oh, yes, I have questions.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
I have not a lot, but let me see, where is it? Can we, are there E? Under E? Okay, I think I only have a couple here.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Okay, on page two of thirteen, for personnel, new communications and special projects manager will be on board at the end of the month. But another key hire was water plant supervisor, so, who's the special projects manager?
Cannot disclose.
Cannot disclose, and what will they do?
That will be, uh, Christie's backfill. Yep.
Oh, that will be her backup?
Backfill, it's her position.
Okay.
It'll do communications and special project.
Okay, and we have hired a water plant supervisor, or not?
We did, yep, Chris Clankie, he starts tomorrow.
Okay. And, um, we still don't have a building official?
Correct.
And we still do not have a planner?
See, the planner.
See, okay, it just says planner.
We have an assistant planner.
Okay, and then, um, on page, yeah, three of thirteen, the first one up, the bed and breakfast density has been reviewed with the planning commission and recommended for approval at the September hearing. The September hearing for council is scheduled for October tenth, and that's changed again, right?
Uh, we'll start the hearing tonight and continue it to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, for the bed and breakfast, okay.
Yeah.
And, let me see that, maybe I only have a couple more. I have a cup, two more, on page eight of thirteen. I was just wondering with the roundabout, are there any questions or problems with any vehicles not being, you know, larger vehicles not being able to make it through there? It's all good?
Haven't heard anything, and I've witnessed plenty of tractor-trailers going through.
Okay, so that's golden. Okay, and then on, I don't think I have any more on the project tracker.
And there was one, there is a ribbon cutting for that project, Thursday morning.
Wednesday morning at eight-thirty, how are we supposed to be there, or?
You can't show up. Eight-thirty Wednesday morning.
Eight-thirty Wednesday morning.
We'll let a truck drive through it.
And we, we, we did not ribbon cutting.
Was done.
What was that called again?
Oh, following up on page two with the personnel issue. Uh, regarding the communication special project manager, you mentioned cannot disclose. Is that because they've accepted and not yet? I don't have a sign of an employer. I do not have a sign of. You don't have, so we just get their initials?
We have a hope and a prayer.
Absolutely.
They're playing hardball.
It'll happen soon, hopefully.
Okay.
Tom, any, uh, closer data on when the plow trucks will be here?
So, yeah, September, September twenty-four, twenty-four now.
Yeah.
Our new sweeper should be here this week or next week.
You got the blower, right?
Yes.
And that can mount to our trucks now?
Yeah, it mounts to one of our loaders.
Yeah, it's got its own motor, right?
It does, and we have a, and we have an additional dump truck as well for hauling operations this year.
And you're training on that blower?
Uh, Halloween, October thirty-first, Louis Louis is coming down from Canada.
Thank you, I'm excited for that, that, really, it came ahead of schedule?
It did, yep.
Not like the bob trucks.
Not like the, yeah, that's not that, it's the chassis, it's the international chassis.
I get it. Um, I have a question on grants, uh, do we, uh, we, I remember at the retreat, we talked about two hundred and seventy million dollars of capital, um, projects, right?
Twelve.
Two, two, whatever, then I'm just all around there. Um, do, do we, can we correlate that with our grant writer saying, this is what we have to accomplish? Could we get the grant writer?
We don't have a grant writer.
Oh, we don't.
We are all grant writers.
We all, we all, take our, you know. I thought we had one under consulting. No, no, I met, I met with someone. Okay. Whose name you gave me. Yeah. And we had breakfast. Oh, I thought you had, you had actually given them a potential. No. Because I, I would like to then, I guess I would shift my proposal to, can we somehow get a consultant grant writer to look at all of our capital-outlay projects and say, here are potential grants that fit the money we need, the funds we need, and do a thorough grant search and saying, these are all good-fit grants, whether or not we have a project. Because as somebody who's written grants for the fire department, you can look at grants and then create a project for that grant, if they are the good fit. And that takes somebody who knows grants, and somebody who's willing to look through the database and say, this is a good fit for the city for a need they have, and then create a project, that's all. The, the person that you had me meet with didn't have capacity to take on any work with the city for the next nine months. Oh, wow, well, I guess they are that good.
Well, and we do do that currently, so, depending on, so you've got utilities.
Yeah.
All right, so our engineers are also grant writers.
Yeah.
And so, we will have them assist in grant applications and helping us write those when, so we know the project, we find the right person, if staff can't write the grant themselves, all by themselves.
Right.
We do reach out and get a specialized person to assist.
Good.
On those individual basis. Now, there's other ones that came to us that we didn't do any outreach at all. That was Arianna, she came to us and said, hey, can I apply for this grant under your name for the recycling? There's seventy-four, no, for a thousand dollars. We gave her the go-ahead, she wrote the grant, she submitted the grant. We got the grant, so now we've created a project. So, it does go both ways.
Uh, no, I appreciate that, I just feel like there's a lot more potential for us to get more grants for these kinds of things, because it's one of the big ways we can fund need. I haven't seen a ton of grants, I mean, we have the Home for Alice grant, right? That was awesome, that was just, you know, I don't even know where it is, but, um, I'm not asking for an update. But like recreation grants and that kind of thing, I haven't seen a ton of those come through, other than the Home for Alice, or Place for Alice, sorry. So, those are the kinds of things that, like, we don't really have a recreation department, so we're not actively seeking recreation grants, and that was kind of a big concern of mine.
What would you do with it if you got it?
I'd build some, and everyone would.
Well, we have a project list.
Yeah.
That is longer than we can do in our lifespan here at the city.
Exactly.
So, we already have the projects, we don't need to go seek grants for projects we don't know about, we know the projects. But we have to staff ourselves to manage those projects.
You can't just.
Because a grant writer doesn't manage a project, so they just write a grant.
Right, but having money can then say, hey, look, we got money for this, we could bring someone on and manage that project. This is, I, I know it's chicken and egg, I'm just saying, I think, we're, we're money-starved, we're people-starved, and I feel like grants might help both of those, that's all.
How many?
If anything, I need a grant assistant for managing the grants that we have.
That's great.
That's, that's my biggest concern at this point.
Didn't someone who works the high school fund work through our entire capital improvement?
Yeah, they did a, yeah, they did a bipartisan instructor law analysis today. I provided it in a report, I believe in the spring, it was a tatty of a report, so they went through all of our water projects and identified, well, it also applied to sewer, all public works related projects. This program would apply.
Okay.
And timelines, and the bill is still, it's still available, and still, there's still money coming down the line.
Okay, no, that's great, and I think, you know, Public Works does a great job, and I've seen it all along the way, but I just think grant writing is something we're underutilizing in the city, and I'd like to see more of it, that's all. Uh, and.
We just recently used Emily San Noble with TO engineers, which it's now a duris, but she wrote a safety grant for Public Works, so.
Okay.
There's, from a public work standpoint, I don't speak to public works.
No, I, I.
Those are resources, consult resources, not by anything else.
Well, and I'd like to see more on parks and rec and that other thing, um. The other question I have is on communications, um, what would it take for us to? Explore more deeply a periodic survey to our community and add that to the list of, instead of a newsletter or in addition to a newsletter? That kind of thing, I mean.
Yeah, one for fully staffed, we can revisit that issue.
Okay, um, that's, like you said, someone's coming on board in a month?
Hopefully.
Okay, great. Um, I just have another question on cottage housing. Is that has, has its own special zoning, or is that um, just small homes? I mean, can I just, Lilith, could you give me a quick just briefing on the cottage housing?
Uh, yes, the planning commission is just starting the initial discussions on cottage housing. At the last meeting we held uh, last month, we talked about. Wenatchee's cottage housing options, but we also just generally talked about what cottage housing is, and yes, it is typically smaller homes grouped together. Sometimes on shared land, sometimes on small individual lots. And they usually have a common green area, green space, and grouped and consolidated parking areas. So the planning commission will start talking about what. They might recommend for the city of Leavenworth and how to incorporate cottage housing.
Okay, that helps, yeah, I just hadn't seen that, I had seen it before, I was just curious. What the details were, and I, I see it as a great way to address affordable housing from a different angle as part of the solution pie, so thank you. Um, the only other thing I see on the project tracker that I didn't, that it's missing. Is last year we discussed, this, earlier this year, we discussed the possibility of shifting our government structure from. Um, mayor council to manager council, and is that on a pro, is that a project still? Or is that?
These are typically capital.
These are projects that are in the budget that are moving.
And that initiative would have to be driven by the council.
How about legal, we have the list of legal.
Yeah, I didn't see it, if it's in there, I missed it, I'm sorry.
We did explore it.
Yeah, and I just want to know, is it still ongoing?
I, I don't believe it ever made it to the project tracker, no.
Well, I'd like to, I guess, could we vote on getting it on the project tracker?
You mean doing it or exploring it?
No, I'm kind of sick of exploring it, I'd like to do it.
I think that's.
We're still in the exploration phase, the last time we talked about this was in the middle of April.
I know, and we have a deadline to get a public referendum on it.
You need an attorney here.
We also decided we weren't going to do it in the middle of a campaign.
Okay.
So. That's probably something to do. Not right before ballots drop.
No, no, and I'm not saying it has to happen now, I'm just saying, do we, do we have? Are we maintaining traction on it, or is it a dropped issue?
I don't think.
Question to us, I guess.
Right.
I don't feel like it's been dropped, I feel like it's been put on pause.
Okay.
Um, until we know what. Our mayor and council look like after the election.
So maybe January or something?
Sure, we can put it up at the beginning of the year.
Great. Yep, if we could get it on, on track for a January discussion, that'd be super, thank you.
All right, any other questions on the tracker? See the upcoming topics that are coming up here? Any other? Questions, suggestions on those? I was wondering if, you know, we have committees and, and if we should consider having, um, I don't know what you call it, but a fire committee. To get going on. Issues. That we can take care of in the city. For um, for fires.
I like that idea, Sharon, that's a great idea.
I was gonna reach out to Ross Frank and have him coffee with him to follow up with when he was here that last time.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Off a committee, maybe, yeah.
Something, cause I feel like we're just treading water and we're not doing anything.
I agree with you.
Yeah, we need to be more proactive. And that's broken into, you know. Like the Firewise retrofit grant, and then like you're dealing with Jason, is planning, the planning part of it. And the prevention part of it.
And we'll take people who aren't on the council. Keep that last two. All right. Other? Questions, comments, we're ready for, right?
Right.
Mayor. Mayor, hey, I just wanted to chime in for tonight's hearings. I had briefly mentioned this to Selby too, and I tried to catch you in the office. But um. Because both the hearing items on the multifamily tax exemption and the bed and breakfast are both going to be continued to the next meeting for additional public comment. And potential action by the city council. Um, I'll be providing a brief introduction for multifamily, we will have our consultant. And they'll be addressing several questions that people have kindly written into us ahead of time. Oh, there he is, Andrew, thank you. Um, but. I would like to also suggest that maybe we keep um. Keep the total discussion to about forty five minutes per topic, if we could. Just to keep the meeting at a more reasonable hour, and because we will have additional time. Having said that, you know, if we have a lot of people showing up and wanting to provide comment, then we could. Continue it, but if we have people just wanting to make repeat comment. Then maybe we could ask them to provide their questions, so I'm presenting this as um, my suggestion and recommendation. To keep the management of the meeting timeline. Doable for tonight, so I'll throw that out there.
We can definitely just see, play it by ear and see um, again, the numbers and if people get a chance to make their comment. But since, like you said, since we're continuing it, we don't need to um, yeah. Um. Go on too long and we can. We can cut it off and say we'll continue it at the next, next meeting, but.
Has the commission surveyed the community about this, or did they just come up with?
There's, there's no survey uh, related to these topics, um. Yes, Mayor, and if you could at the end encourage people to send their questions to us ahead of time, because we can do the researching and respond back to them. And maybe discuss things through, so that would be excellent, I appreciate it.
I'm going to suggest that we have a forum at the fest hall like we did with the pool. Get, get everybody there, so that we're not just pictures on the screen and uh, that we, I think that works really well. And so that people can talk and be there in a group, just like the pool uh, P R S A meeting. So I'm going to suggest that. They could come here, if we, we've got. I just gonna, I'm just going to accept.
But why does, I mean, we don't even have.
Because I think we would have a lot of people, because I think there's too many people that have no clue. They don't even know what's going on. A public hearing is different than the forum. And I have. Couple other council people that are in favor of that also. Well, you, you can hold a, you can hold a forum. Here as well, you don't need to have it in the fest hall if there isn't the crowds of people. And that's what I'm going to suggest. All right, let's take a break.
All right.
Well, that was city council meeting, the order for October tenth. Please stand for flag. Sharon?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Yeah, I, I'm excited.
Karen Waters.
Clint Strand.
Jason Lundgren.
Anne Husbird.
Marco Aurelia.
Tim Borla.
And Zeke Reister is excused tonight, won't be with us, so otherwise all here. Um, one change to the agenda here, you've got the uh. Ordinance for the multifamily tax exemption listed here as item ten, and that's not going to happen tonight, we're continuing this. Uh, public hearing for next. To the next period here, so that, that's stricken. Um, but otherwise, I would take a motion to approve the consent. I have two questions. Okay. Of course I do.
Claims?
One.
One.
Yes.
Yes, she said.
Okay, I just, I think I just have two. Sorry, it takes so long? Okay, on page two. Is the cascade uh, down about the middle? Is Cascade Community Markets, is that farmer's market?
It is.
Okay, I didn't know if there was something else going on there. And my other question is on page. Six. Um. I don't know what a Park Mobile LLC is.
Park Mobile.
They are the app that people use to pay for their meters.
For the meters.
Okay.
Parking.
I thought it was park. All right, I have to take a motion. Consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Who said that?
Marco, oh, I said second, but someone else said second over there. It was a guy.
All in favor, let me see your hand. Passed unanimously. Comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? Yeah. So we, so it catches it on the. Our speakers, yes.
We should move that forward again.
Yeah.
And um, I just, I have a quick couple of comments on the really great uh, study session. Great comments on study session, first of all, I wanted to thank you to the chamber, because I, I was really encouraged to hear what they said about the Oktoberfest, um. How that's been a lot more uh, kind of um, community friendly. And a lot more people are going into the shops and, you know, really spending time, I just, I thought that was really positive, I liked how that seems to be the look, you know, going forward. And I was encouraged that, that they were looking at it, and so how to, you know, get with the amount of people coming, that people will want tickets, just so what we can. Hold as a city for the weekend, so I, I thought that was really encouraging, um. I uh, was thinking that, I like what a couple of people have said about um, having a fire forum, I thought it was really important, um, when. Uh, Ross Frank talked about the things that we can be doing as a city, knowing that, that Shalan also has a response team, but also realizing that. If things got really crazy, would they actually go get here? So we have some issues that we've talked of ourself, but maybe. You know, I, and so I, 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 I'm a big farm person, I think that that's a great idea, bring people together. Because at some point the community is going to have to know. What our plan is, and so we know the forum, that we have, you know, I say, I think that's a great way to really be able to communicate together, saying this is important. This will affect you if this happens in town. So I think that we'll, a big community fire uh, wise for it to be a great idea, um. And uh, I also, uh, I really share, I think the housing forum might be a good idea, you know, not only about. You know, the empty, you know, what could be, would you mind if we text you, um, for some affordable housing? You know, just maybe bringing the, the city, the other state, housing is a problem, so we have ideas, can you throw out ideas? What are your thoughts here, so this is kind of what goes as at this point? How do you move this going forward, and just get ideas from the greater community, my, my issue with just the council meetings, which some of you know, said. Um, there's not a lot of time to dispense, and it's not a lot of time for people to have such ideas, um, that was, you know, the time to get together and judge. Groups, so I, I'm not a farm person, but um. And then uh, that one you um, talked about. Oh, and the bins, I love that idea, that looked really interesting, I liked the point you guys were talking about, um. Maybe doing a rental for a year, just to see how they work, um, to see if people will actually be able to just see which, which, those, which of the bins, I thought that was really smart, it was just. Buying their, no, buying them right out, um, and seeing that they don't work, and then. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks Polly. And Polly, you'll be. Happy to know maybe that after the first of the year, we're planning a huge. Housing thing that'll talk about the whole spectrum, not just an individual thing, but and, and all the state laws that are coming down and all of that, so. That is going to work, so. It's, it's going to get big, yeah, just, just focused on that, yes. Anybody else want to speak to something not on the agenda? Not. We'll move on then, um, we were scheduled to have a presentation. Um, by Tracy Do, but I don't see her. Superintendent. So we'll reschedule her. How that. Fell through, so we'll move on, number, item seven is a public hearing on the multifamily tax exemption, again, we'll start that tonight. Um, people's comments and questions, we've gotten some ahead of time. And then uh, we'll continue that for next time, so. Well, uh.
Great, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, I'd like to introduce the multifamily tax exemption. Hearing, this is a public hearing, it's an opportunity to hear comments from the public on the proposed uh, tax exemption program. We're also welcoming it as a time to continue to take questions and provide some responses. And at the continued hearing, we'd like to focus primarily on responses to the questions. Anything the council would like to modify the ordinance with, um, but of course we'll. Take comments at any point in time during the hearing process. The multifamily tax exemption program is a program that was offered under state law. Historically to large cities as a way of revitalizing uh. Commercial cores or neighborhood cores, where there was a mix of retail and multifamily dwellings. Only last year was the program opened up to all cities across the state, it was opened up primarily because it has been so effective in the larger communities. And there's a need across the state for housing everywhere. This program allows for developers of multifamily units, that's four or more units. To request through a city council process, a tax exemption for either twelve or twenty years. The way we've drafted the program based on comments and discussions so far is that. We have a twelve year program for rentals and a twenty year program for owner occupied units. It, these units. Serve income levels from eighty percent of the average median income. To a hundred and fifteen percent of the average median income, which is defined currently. By HUD, and it takes in both Shalan and Douglas Counties as a metropolitan district. Right now, every year that number changes. But right now, that number is eighty thousand five hundred dollars for a family of four. So typically, that's two income earners and two children. But any family of four meeting that income level. Could potentially be considered for this program if it were put into place. The way the program is drafted, the. Developer has to put either twenty or twenty five percent of all, of the units into the program. And the remaining can be at market level. Um, there have been a number of questions that have come in. And I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Born to kind of walk through each of those questions. One more quick summary, though, the program does. Exempt the taxes for those limited time, years, twelve or twenty. At the same time, those taxes are dispersed among the remaining taxpayers in the city of uh, of Leavenworth. And that has caused some level of concern or discussion. Um, and so Andrew had pulled together a cost estimate. And I'll let him kind of review that, there was a question of whether those tax dispersed taxes or tax shift. Apply to low income seniors who are a part of a discount program for the county, and it does. Um, but it also. Is discounted as the senior has a discounted rate on their normal taxes. This tax shift would go into the overall mix, but also be just. Counted. So we did. Reach out to Shalan. And count. You're breaking up, Lilith, verification.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you there, Andrew?
Oh, I'm here, you were just breaking up for a minute, and I was wondering, I was. Checking to see if it was me, so. Um, yeah, so thanks for that, um. I, I can certainly talk a bit about some of the questions that came forward, um, to try to address them. Uh, I did. Present at um, the previous council meeting. Uh, just an idea about what the magnitude of the, of tax shifting might be. Like, what, what may be uh, useful is for me to just go over at a high level some of the questions. Um, if I've missed any, then please by all means, let me know, and I can uh, I can address those as well. Um, I think. The, one of the, one of the points that I just wanted to address at, at first is. The. Idea about where to set the uh, income level for. The, the um, for affordability, for the uh, for the affordable units. I think that the comment regarding uh, whether it should be set at one fifteen, or whether it's more reasonable to set it at eighty percent, given. Uh, the understanding about the demands for uh. You know, lower income housing at that level is pretty valid, that in, in looking around. Um, just to give you a sense, and this is something that I forwarded to. Uh, Lilith, before the meeting, but I. Let me just pull this up here. Uh, and I think that I actually showed this again at the previous meeting as well. If we're looking at what rents would be charged under the M F T program. This is for twenty twenty three, obviously, um, in moving forward. You know, even if you pass it tonight, you're not going to get any, uh. You're likely not going to get any immediate takers on the program, so this is just to give you an idea about what it would look like now. But this is, this is essentially the, the numbers to take a look at here, that I've highlighted on the screen. Can you all read this, by the way, I want to make sure that it's. Okay, great. Um. So if we're looking at. Um, the different. A M I levels, one thing to note is that when we're doing these calculations. We're looking at thirty percent as being the limit for all housing costs. So what we usually do is to take out estimates for utilities. Um, one way or another, uh, that. Um, one way or another, uh, that is part of the uh housing costs, whether it's. Uh, included in rent or whether it's paid separately by the tenant. But in looking at kind of the max monthly rent. Uh, these levels should give you an understanding here about what we're. What we what we would be looking at for income levels right now. So um if you're looking at rent by bedrooms. If you're looking at eighty percent, it would be uh a uh a rent. Restricted limit of a little over a thousand dollars per month. Uh, at one fifteen, that's about fifteen hundred. So I think that, you know, the folks around the table obviously have a lot of experience as well as the folks in the audience about. What rents look like locally and how easy it is to get housing at these different levels. At a one bedroom. So I I. I certainly know some statistics on the basis of what I could see in in a different data products that I have, but. Um, I put forward to all of you that. You know, generally, one hundred fifteen percent is kind of. Is is often on the outside level of affordability that we're looking at in communities. So um eighty percent is usually a a better limit to take. Just move through the rest of it um before I finish. Um. So um. In terms of the way that it's applied, there are some things that you just can't. Do or would be very challenging to do. Under um. Under the statute. For example, um, you can't. Prevent a certain portion of. Property taxpayers in the city. From paying uh from um. The tax shift that may result from this program. Under the Washington State Constitution, you need to charge everybody at the same rate. There are certain specific um exemptions that are included under statute and under the constitution. But. If you you need to charge everybody the same rate. The the county assessor would probably uh uh combust if. If there was a need to try to separate out different um. Property owners along different criteria. It would it would just be. Too exhaustive and it's not really allowed. Um. In terms of it applying for only part of a development. That would be challenging for a property that would be under. A um. That would be on a single parcel. This is intended specifically in the statute to exempt. All of the uh residential improvement value from the site. So having it only apply to part of the site. Would be a very challenging um uh case to make under the statute. So. Um, there are other ways of looking at that in terms of talking about. Potentially the maximum amount that council would be willing to agree to exempt during a year or during a certain period. But that would it it's not necessarily possible to write it in in that way into the code. Uh, work location requirements. Uh. I haven't seen those anywhere else in the state. I would. Say that. I I I'm not a lawyer. I can't comment on whether or not that would be possible. What I would say, though, is that it would add to the administrative complexity of the program. Uh, one of the benefits of the NFT program is that you don't need to hire additional. City staff to administer an affordable housing program. Certainly, uh. Lilith would have to take on some uh additional role in overseeing the administration of the program. But in terms of things like. Checking for eligibility in terms of regular monitoring of properties. Um, it's a lot. Uh, it's a lot heavier of a lift. If um. If the property owner needs to figure out where people live and potentially evict people if they get a job somewhere else. Uh, it's also very difficult to kind of oversee that as a city. So it's. There are a lot of things that are potentially possible, but it may be a difficult thing to actually put into place. Um, in terms of the housing incentives that are currently on. That are currently in the code. In theory. The MFT program can apply. Where it becomes, well, and and I should note as well that the owner uh the homeownership. Element of the MFT program aligns pretty well with. Programs like Habitat for Humanity. Which seems like where some of these grant programs would be targeted. But for um private sector development, which is really like for, you know, market rate development, which is really where um. The MFT program is targeted. It's a very hard thing to. Now that I'm still sharing that. Um, it's a very hard thing to um have them fulfill the requirements of grant programs you have in there. And then um. It the other the other two major items in the code, one would be the. Uh, the density increases that are included and it's. Um, it it's a it's a pretty. Light incentive for the private market. I I haven't talked with. Uh, Lilith about the uptake of that program in the private. Sector, but I I would assume that. Uh, it's a bit of a lift for um, you know, market rate developers. So, yeah, and then let's see um. The, oh, yes, uh, the the one month. Term. Limit in the code. So the way that the code's written right now, it says that you need to be a renter for at least one month. This is where it's a bit of a challenge uh where. That requirement is put in to recognize that some leases are month to month, but may extend over the longer term. We uh. Typically see that there's a lot of administrative costs associated with the MFT program where. Or I don't want to say a lot, like an exhaustive amount, but. There's overhead that the landowner that the property owner faces with certifying um income requirements. And that's a very hard thing to do if you're getting a new tenant month after month. It's not something that can happen uh, you know, in a few minutes. It takes documentation to complete. And the state is putting in some requirements that will put in um an auditing program that will ensure that. Uh, this paperwork is in order. So. To do that every month, I don't think that any any landlord would be keen on doing that at all. I was recently in a conversation with somebody that was saying like, yeah. I'm a, you know, own a few buildings. I have one person that just deals with certifying MFT. Um, uh tenants and that's kind of a full-time job. Other. Uh, other entities sometimes hire separately uh uh third-party firms to do the certification, but it's a it's a lift. So um landlords are not going to be keen on. Doing that for short-term uh rentals and that. I think that's it. Did I miss any?
No, I think you hit the big questions, although I'm not sure. I think the city council and hopefully everybody in attendance was able to grasp the actual question. Um, but you did a good job uh answering them. Um, on that last point in particular, I I will note that. The property owner is responsible for all the certifications and verifications. And then they submit that to the city for review. And so that's where that heavier lift and the lighter lift kind of balance out um. In this particular program um. With that. General. Overview of the program and a recap of answers to questions we've received so far. Mayor, council members, I'll turn it over to you to open it up for your discussion and or public comment, whichever format you'd like to take.
I have a question.
Sure.
It's for Andrew. Andrew, do you have any data from developers? That say that that eighty percent at the thousand twenty-five a month is feasible for them? Because I don't think it is. So even though that's what the rent comes out to, can they build it, rent it for them? With the exemption.
Yeah, it it's um. So. There is a balance that's here. Developers can take this or not. Um, and you're right, if it's the case where they're going to be losing money. Uh, they're not going to take it. I what I would say is that I. Just based on what I can see from market rents that are available right now. And and the comments that are received, one fifteen is probably too high. Um, that, you know, just in even just before the meeting, I. Was looking on Zillow to see if I could find examples of uh apartments that would rent at that level, and I was able to find a few. That I was planning on pulling out for anecdotal reasons, but I'll I'll leave that for later. But it. I I think that I think that you're right, though, in that it we can split the difference and there may be a question of. Taking a little bit more of a look at um. Kind of the benefit versus the the. Cost. So looking at the looking at the estimated tax exemption and then looking at uh the the uh. Break in the. Uh, break in the rent that would be uh charged. So I think that that's a fair point.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see what they think versus what the information that we're gathering, but because that seems to be left out. So because if we're going to entertain this, we don't want developers to come in. Yet you can entertain it because they say I just can't build it for that.
Yeah.
Well, that's that's your clue, though, and that's when they could come and and again, you're you're going to prove whatever comes before you. Given project and they may say I can't do it unless you get it at ninety or whatever.
Yeah, I just like to know what that is. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Will.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so two points. Caitlin Bettinger from Upper Valley Men made an excellent point quite some time ago about the need to have. A range of income because not everybody's going to hit that eighty spot on. And so it becomes really difficult to manage a program that's just so uh rigid. Um, so I would recommend retaining um. A scale, although it doesn't have to go to a hundred and fifteen. Um, the other point I just wanted to let you know is that I have reached out to the. Um, Wagner apartment folks. They have reviewed our program. They had some comments, but they haven't gotten them back to me yet. So um I. I have made an effort with a a large developer who's been a part of these programs before to get their feedback on this. Specific one that we're proposing and hopefully we'll have something by the next meeting.
Just to just to add to that, that's the most important feedback that you can get. I mean, if uh. If it's a developer in the area can look at it and see that they can work with it, then. That's um, that's a pretty important data thing.
That'd be great. Other questions?
That was all very confusing to me, which is probably no surprise. I didn't hear anything about you mentioning the cost to the of the property taxes to the property owners that live here now that will pick up that fee. It sounds like we're catering to the builders and um. And we're just being left hanging and whatever comes up is what we have to do.
Um, Sharon, uh, the projects will come before the city council on a case-by-case basis. And the councils will review them and determine if that's something they want to support for the community at that time, based on. All kinds of factors. Some of them are in the code itself. Um, and then the presentation a little while back. Andrew had provided a project of eight million dollars with a potential impact uh of about less than ten dollars. Uh, to a year. To properties valued at four hundred thousand. So if your house were six hundred thousand. It would be maybe fifteen dollars a year, less than uh to support. The affordable units. And 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 again, remember, they have to be a minimum of twenty percent of the development and they have to. Um, be a minimum of four units as well. So somewhere between four and twenty percent or twenty-five percent, depending. On the development and that cost would be shifted for a period of either twelve years or twenty years. And then removed from the shifting.
So with the twelve to twenty years, who makes that decision? And is could one place be twelve years and one place be twenty years?
Go. Oh, go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so the the way that the code is written right now, um, the twelve years is for rental properties. The twenty years is for affordable.
Homeownership.
Yeah, and the affordable homeownership properties are it's. That's a case where it's not necessarily a private developer in that. The affordable units are overseen by. Uh, a third-party nonprofit or housing authority involved in housing. Uh, the the nonprofit involved in housing or or housing authority. So they'd be in charge of ensuring that those. Those units remain affordable in perpetuity.
So if my house was. If if my house was forty four hundred thousand and so I'm paying the nine dollars and eighty cents. A year for that and Widener comes in and they're going to put in sixteen units. And then you're going to then you add whatever. The the uh four hundred thousand dollar house overhead. House. Owner has to pay on that. So it could end up that, I mean. It's deceiving to say nine dollars and eighty cents a year because it could be. It could. That's going to stack up.
That's if it's an eight million dollar project that they came in. That was and that was all very and remember when we're talking those numbers, it's. It's. It's just guesswork at this point because what you'll actually approve as a council will be a project that'll actually have tighter numbers when they. This is the total project cost. This is the total shift. This is what it would translate. So you'll get to approve all of that. Right now it's hypotheticals.
I know, but once we put it in. It's gonna it's it's not going to be nine dollars and eighty cents a year. It's going to change when as more units. Uh, come into view. Um, it's not just going to stay at that. That's not what we're not voting on nine dollars and eighty cents a year. It's solid. Am I right?
You are right. Correct. If there's if there's more than one project, if this gets adopted and there's more than one project. Over the course of its lifetime in the code, then every single project will have its sort of tax shift implication.
Yeah.
But you would approve each one separate. It's you don't approve them all right now.
No, I know because they aren't happening all right now.
Exactly. So you would get a chance to say we've done enough. We're not going to keep adding.
I don't see that happening.
So but what I just want to make sure I understand what I'm hearing here and also that I'm hearing correctly Sharon's. Concerns. So. What we would potentially be voting on in this, after all this is said and done, is not. Voting this into existence where this is an administrative action and we no longer have our hands on this. This is simply, we would be voting on this being. A tool in our tool belt that each and every project that comes up for this kind of designation, the city council would get to decide. Whether or not it's worth the cost to us and to our taxpayers. Did I get that correct? That's that's correct. Okay, then but what I'm hearing Sharon say is. Regarding that number. Her concern is. If the Widener come if Widener, just to give an example, comes back and says, we're going to devote twenty percent of our units in our new three hundred unit. Complex. And we're going to have the appropriate tax shift. Which would be a lot more than ten dollars. That would still come to the city council for consideration and approval or not.
Right.
We would have the final.
Right.
Yes.
In that scenario, it'll only be a twelve year because it would.
It's a rental, right, right.
So. So, so because we have quite a few public here, um, Mayor, can I suggest that we um, start taking public comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Andrew, can you start share?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so go on. Okay, what's the first up?
Oh, her, no, her hands down, so now.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have a quick question, so as it applies, so each. So this could be for future developments, or could it be for existing developments? That get this exemption, and if it's for future and existing, and they come to the city council. And they propose this. Relief, does the public get to comment on it at that time? To see what their input is, if they want to do that or not? And then, does this apply only to the city limits? Or does this also apply to the UGA and the broader community as part of the tax shift?
Well, quite a few questions there, it's only the city limits. And it does apply to retrofit housing, uh, if they meet certain criteria. And what was the last question, Andrew?
So all existing develops, all existing developments in Leavenworth, four units or more at one time could apply for this.
No.
No.
No, it, it's only in cases where. Uh, new units are created or, you know, there's some. There was some rehabilitation um, uh. Condition as well, but this is typically, the process requires you to apply. During the planning application process. So this is not a case where someone can come in who has a twenty year old building and say, I want a twelve year.
Yeah, they can come.
So then, so, so Metal Arc, they've already got their permit, so they couldn't apply for this because they've already received their permit. So, and they're under construction, so they wouldn't apply, they wouldn't be able to apply for this, correct?
Well, they're. Yeah, they're new, there's, they haven't started construction, their building permits haven't all been issued. There may be an opportunity for them to participate. Uh, they have a boundary line adjustment in, um, they'd have to modify that unless they were going to provide enough. For the whole site as Andrew was talking about, um, so, yeah.
So what's the cutoff for a development to be able to apply for this?
It's typically when um, building permits are issued, but Lilith, I can't remember from the code. Uh, specifically.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at what we ended up drafting, I think we went with just when the building permits are issued, anytime prior to that. Um, and then they have three years to complete the construction. With an option for an extension to complete if they run into challenges, so that.
So the building permits, just me just as an example, so for Metal Arc, the building permits have been issued.
No, not all of them, only the clubhouse has ready to issue, it hasn't been issued.
And as far as your other comment, Kim, the whole process would be an open one for the council, so yes, there would be public comment. Um, in any of these that were brought forward.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. When it comes forward. Would have public comments and the city council would vote whether they get the tax exemption or not, and it would only apply to. The city limits, okay, thank you, that, that clarifies a lot.
Yep, Rona.
Yeah, hi, um. I, I just want to get a little clearer about the numbers. Carl said it's guesswork at this point, um, and Lilith threw out fifteen dollars. Um, a household a year, so just a couple of numbers to help me get a sense of this. We have what, seven hundred fifty houses in the city limits, are those the ones that would be tapped? What is that number and is that how it would work?
Yeah, it's, it, it's based on, well, it's complicated. Um, within the city, there's six hundred sixty million dollars. Worth of uh, taxable. Uh, real estate, taxable property. The exemption applies, though, to every taxable district. As well, so it also includes the county, the, like the mosquito district, the fire district. All of that as well. Um, which is why it's very difficult to nail down a precise number because the levy rates change from year to year. It, it, it doesn't really depend on location here because everything is generally within the same districts, but it's. There, there are a lot of changes from year to year that mean that it's, it's hard to nail it down and say, this will be ten dollars, or this will be five dollars, or this will be more, so.
Can I follow up then, if it's hard to nail down the number, can you nail down the geographical area that's covered? Is there a map that shows us where those taxes would be taken from?
Well, the taxes are within, the shift occurs within the city limits. The areas at which this development could occur are part of the ordinance, it's the multifamily zoning and the commercial zoning districts.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't ask that properly, I mean, um. The, which households or, or which, how do you determine? Who is going to pay the taxes for the tax break that is built into this?
Um, it's. Non discriminations, so Washington State has a very crazy property tax system. And essentially, there are all these different overlapping districts. Um, the county assessor is the one that determines the levy rate. All of this tax shift discussion is just based on the, on some of the administrative steps that they take. Because of the levy lid that's present, like you. There's a limit in terms of how much the total levy in jurisdictions can be raised for a year. Uh, not accounting for new construction, so it's, it, it, it. I, I wish there was an easy answer that I could give you, I, you know, the spreadsheet that I had up before that had all of the districts and. Lots of numbers up to six or seven decimal points is honestly the easiest uh, way of defining it, and even that's the simplification. So it, it's challenging, but it's, it's. What we, what we're trying to do is to just give an understanding about the general magnitude of what it would be.
And Rona, if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, I, I heard you saying who it doesn't get spread to, and that would be all the other properties. So the commercial and the residential, all the value of the remainder of the city that isn't part of the exempt property. Would bear equally price per thousand shift. If that makes sense, is that what you're asking?
I, I'm, I'm asking that, and are you saying it's only then within the city limits?
Yeah, it's, it, well, it, it, there's also a small amount that goes to like the fire district, the hospital district. The library, port, all of those as well, because it, it's exempting all property taxes.
But it's only within the city limits that it gets spread to and. Is the exempt property that, that's spread to those properties within the city limits is the shift.
But it'll. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I'm hearing you say there's other districts that, and their county and all those that are also, it's. Their, their taxes also get shifted. But the shift occurs within the city, it gets spread within the city. We're not, we're not going to spread that tax to some people outside city.
Um, technically.
But it.
It is.
It is.
And it, it, it impacts their um, tax that they receive, say the school district and the.
Really. Larger and the fire district is larger, and.
But they don't pay, the only tax exemption they get is the city tax exemption, uh, school district tax exemption. They're not exempt covers.
City taxes. So the MFT program. Blanket covers um, which all property tax.
Maybe I could sum this up for now, um, what, what my comment is about this is that if we're asking. If we're asking the citizens to weigh in and we're asking the council to vote on a per basis. Even this conversation with the most professional people in the room is confusing. I know I don't get it yet. And I'm, I'm wondering if the community could get it when it seems like there isn't agreement amongst the experts. So what I'd ask for is if you could, uh, maybe you've already done this, I'm sorry, I haven't. I haven't looked through all the materials, but if you could somehow summarize it with maps or some other way, so we'd have a better handle. To understand what you're talking about, because I don't get it. I, maybe I'm the only one, but I don't get it.
I'll say it's a, it's a very challenging concept, and it's one that, um, it's. It's, it's, it's pretty difficult to. Yeah, it's something that we can work to explain. But it's, it's complicated, so it's not you, it's, it's. It's the fact that we need to, we need to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Well, yeah, and to, to say that we will have and. Sorry, sorry about that.
Bottom line, though, would you ever be able to, because it's complicated, would you be able, ever be able to give us a number? Like, it is indeed going to be fifteen dollars a year for these households and these businesses within this geographic area? Or is it too complicated to ever even give us a number?
No, I, well, I think, I think the, the thing is, when a project comes forward, those numbers get solidified. When they come forward with an actual ask, that's when we'll know. And then you will get, this is how much the exemption would be, and this is how it's going to be applied by the. By the county to do that, the difficulty is to do an arbitrary one because there are so many. Factors, but, but before we vote on anything, we'll have those numbers.
Well, and, and to clar- clarify too, um. It depends on when it goes into effect, so we issue, you know, it happens with the building permit. When the city council reviews it, they're still. And just to clarify for you, Mayor, the, it's still going to be a bit arbitrary, it'll be closer. But it'll still be arbitrary because they could finish that development in two years, three years, they could do an extension and have five years before they actually finish all the construction. And then it'll go into the effect the year after, so what we are asking the community and the city council. To accept is there's a tax shift. And overall, it's quite minor to residential development property owners. But it will affect property owners, it will affect all taxing districts, so it's. It, if you're buying into this program and adopting this program, you're accepting there's a tax shift. You're accepting you don't have a specific number for it, but you're accepting the concept.
Yeah.
You, you really are, be, and then for each individual project. You'll look at it in more detail.
Does this.
That much closer to knowing what the number will be, but you may not know what the number is actually going to be.
Is there a chance you guys could make a graph that would show a range, like a sensitivity analysis?
It'll change.
Yes and no, I mean, we can, we can provide estimates, but the challenge is more that. It's impacted by a lot of factors, the biggest one being the other development that goes on in the city, because. Uh. There's a lot that can go on with changing the amount of uh. Uh, taxable property in the city, if there's another big development. For example, that's not exempted, uh, that's going to fundamentally change the calculus here, so. What I think is important, though, is ensuring that you have a good idea about the general magnitude of the impacts. Um, it's just the same as if you were talking about a school bond, for example. You're not going to be able to nail down over the next like five or ten years exactly how much every single person will be able to pay. Uh, would be required to pay for that, however, you'd be able to get some understanding about what the general effect would be um. To, to individual, to, you know, uh. To uh, to tax bills.
Yeah, I'm just asking for a range or like an absolute maximum limit, a ceiling limit that you would ever, that it would ever happen, because I think that's what everyone's really asking for.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that it, it's one of those things where if I can't give you a really solid answer, I hem and haw a little bit, but we can get to the general ballpark. The point where we could be generally confident about the impacts, that it's not going to cost people in our middle age.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have one more question, then, you're talking about. The concept itself, is this concept the one that includes the average median income being eighty percent to a hundred fifteen percent? And, and basing what's affordable off of that, maybe you guys already talked about it.
Well, so those are just, it. Again, um. Those are just where um, the. Uh, renters that would be able to access the affordable units. Like where their income cutoffs would be. And they use arbitrary numbers for it because uh, it's a lot easier than trying to establish it on a case by case basis. So they just have a number that they get from the federal government. For, you know, the, the uh, for the region, and they base it off of a benchmark from that. That's, but that's only on the other side of it, that doesn't involve tax shifting at all.
Yeah, I understand, I'll, I'll, I'll let go now, because I know there's a lot of people with great questions, thank you.
Okay, Betsy, you're next. Betsy, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, all right. Uh, you know, we've heard a lot of this before, uh. In, in which, you know, these. Projects and programs are proposed. And many of them originate in larger urban areas. And then they're applied in our small community. And sometimes they just don't work out, and we've sort of. Are entering a period where we could be, be guinea pigs again for another program that has been designed for larger areas. And uh, there are so many. Complications from this, um. One of my big concerns is it seems to me that if we want workforce housing. There should absolutely be some sort of requirement that those who are purchasing and getting benefits. From uh, this should be. Working within the region, and if that's not possible to. Comply, and if it, and if the onus for that falls on the developers. I, I just don't see what the ultimate benefit to the community is. Once again, we could be facing just outsiders moving in. You know, second homes, finding various ways to tweak this program to their benefit. And ultimately really not benefit the workforce, I could see that happening. Um, also, I'm, I think that the tax shift. Should primarily go on the businesses and the major, um. Real estate owners. Because they're the ones who are complaining about not having enough workers and et cetera. So, anyway. Uh, it. There just seem to be a lot of, um. A lot of additional expense to administer. This, if every single applicant program has to be reviewed. Uh, by multi-level agencies. Uh, it just seems absurdly bending over backwards once again to accommodate. Developers with not enough genuine. Positive results for workforce housing. And I think we need to be really careful about entering into another program that could just. Turn out to be more of a burden than it is an improvement.
Okay, so, thank you, Betsy, um, we'll have Karen, and then Kim, I'm going to ask that you could submit your, if you've got further questions, we need to wrap this one up. We've got another hearing and we are going to continue this one, and since you. We need to wrap this one up, we've got another hearing and we are gonna continue this one, and since you've had some questions, you can just. Um again, get them written and we can address them next time, but Karen, you wanna? Speak.
Okay, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm I'm concerned that the rental portion of this bill is uh. Geared toward limited income rather than workforce housing. I'm concerned that uh our local businesses are asked to subsidize these tenants. With their taxes. It but it doesn't necessarily result in a workforce for those businesses. And also, why should current landlords subsidize developers with their taxes? When they already have units for rent in this range. I looked at Craigslist and Ville Coleman Village. Is saying their two-bedroom, two-bath apartments are two thousand dollars a month. I would be more in favor of the ownership model.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Karen.
Karen's last name.
Oh, Karen.
Karen.
Karen, Karen.
H A I R E.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, thanks all for your comments, and if you've got other written questions that. We might be able to gather information before the next time we meet. Uh we'll continue this hearing, um what's the date? We are, so the twenty-fourth, we will.
At seven P M.
Yep, and so for now, we will close the public hearing for now.
Not closing.
We're not, we're continuing it, but we're wrapping it up, how's that?
Continuing it.
We're continuing it to next, next time on the twenty-fourth. But we will then move on to our second public hearing on the bed and breakfast code amendments. And I will have a public hearing at eight fifty, or seven fifty-seven, so go ahead, Lilith.
Yeah, thank you so much. The planning commission has worked pretty diligently on the bed and breakfast options. With the goal and intent of modifying the regulations to. Limit the number of B and Bs throughout the community, I know we also talked in detail, the planning commission did. About neigh- limiting them in neighborhoods, and they looked at several, several different options. Um what is being presented to you tonight is their recommendation. For how to modify the bed and breakfast and limit them citywide. As well as change the regulations. To limit the conditional use permit to time out when the property is sold. And the primary intent there being. To ensure that that bed and breakfast, say it is a two-bedroom, two-bath home. Being sold as a bed and breakfast would sell quite a bit higher than a two-bedroom, two-bath home without. The commercial enterprise with component, and then conversation email with the. Shalane County Assessor's Office, they do not distinguish or make. Adjustments in their evaluations of, in this example, two-bedroom, two-bath homes. Whether or not they have a B and B in them, so because they can sell at such. Significantly higher levels. They do impact the value of the remaining house stock of similar size and location. So that was a interesting and unexpected modification to the regulation. I hope you've had time to review the. Transmittal memo, it talks about how the planning commission has been reviewing this docket since the spring. Uh staff had two sections within the regulations that went to. The planning commission hearing that they did not want to retain, and those are detailed. There in the packet, um tab eight, I believe. And I'll read them. So that it's in the record and clear, but the proposed L M C fifty-two, one-twenty B, the last line, the planning commission. Planning commission request to be stricken, it says no B and bed and breakfast shall be permitted within the city limits. When the existing percentage of bed and breakfast are. At or above four percent of the total housing stock within the residential zoning district. Goes on to talk about what, how four percent is calculated. The portion that was stricken is, however, if a B and B is operated within the same dwelling as the owner. Not a separate dwelling, it shall not be calculated in the four percent cap, because it's not removing a dwelling unit from the overall. Housing stock, that idea came up in one of the workshops, um I put it in the draft for the. Hearing so that it could be vetted out further, um it was fairly unanimous by the planning commission. Not to include that. The other item that was in the draft before the planning commission hearing that was modified is. Eighteen fifty-two, one-twenty, item F. The last line was stricken again, it reads expiration of the conditional use permit for bed and breakfast. Goes on to say, in order to provide opportunity for residents to have a B and B and encourage infill development. Conditional use permits for being bed and breakfast shall expire immediately upon transfer of ownership. Transfer of ownership shall be any transfer not associated with a marriage, divorce, or death. This expiration shall be applicable to all bed and breakfast permits regardless of the date of decision. Or the form of approval. Uh we struck out, this per- provision shall go into effect January one of twenty thirty-three. Um legal recommended we add this statement, it says, this provision shall apply retroactively. To bed and breakfast existing prior. As prior non-conforming uses and to bed and breakfast with permits issued prior to the effective date of this provision. And that was the intent of the planning commission, a good clarification from our legal review, and we appreciate that. Um it'll be up to the city council if you want to provide a grace period for people to adjust to this provision. Staff would still recommend that, um even if it's a a short grace period of of two years. Um and then Allison Miller, our current planning commission chair, provided a summary in that transmittal memo. And that's in the document, very much appreciate her taking the time. Since she wasn't gonna be able to be here today. With that, the planning commission recommended approval with those modifications. Um and staff has added the legal uh s- sentence as well. So if you are in agreement, you can pass this resolution. As noted with the prior hearing, this hearing will be continued to the next meeting as well. To address public noticing requirements, so we will be able to take public comment tonight and at our next meeting. Before the city council takes action, thank you.
Lilith, do you have a current um number for what percent of bed and breakfast we have now, based on the new code?
Not new, uh existing code, we have about twenty-one bed and breakfast. We have about twenty-one bed and breakfast right now, and we have a few more who are going to hearing at the end of the month. Well, we should have, you know, ten. Uh the number of homes that we have in our city limits using this calculation right now is. Eight hundred and seventy-seven, and that would be thirty-five bed and breakfast citywide.
Okay, thank you.
Lilith, I got a question. In your L M C section, section F. So.
Yes.
If I have a bed and breakfast and I wanna gift it to a family member, can I do that?
No. Marriage, divorce, and death, you can gift it in your will.
Thirty-five.
No, we have twenty-one right now.
Yeah, but she said over.
Max is thirty-five, that's.
Awesome, other questions?
That's thirty-five, let's go.
Um yes, Lilith, in the, the second one, the this provision shall go into effect January first twenty thirty-three, that was scratched. So, when will it go into effect?
It would go into effect upon adoption of the ordinance and and noticing, which usually takes a couple of weeks after. The city council takes action.
Okay. Yeah, what what's with um.
Me.
Tavor's question, so if you pass away, you could have in your will that you gifted it to. Your daughter.
Whoever.
Yeah, or whoever. They would be able to do that, but that's the only way they'd be able to do that, is that, am I ever saying that correctly?
Yeah, if it's the property transferred as a result of the owner's death. Then the conditional use permit would run with it.
Lilith, do you have a number of what that thirty-five B and Bs would be when the nurse done, fully built up?
Oh, say say it again, what that?
So you said the, what the number of housing units we have now, we could have thirty-five B and Bs, correct?
Yes.
That's not taking into consideration the three hundred units that the nurse building, correct?
Those aren't houses.
Well, it's a.
Count.
Those wouldn't count.
Doesn't take.
Wouldn't count at all?
No.
Hmm hmm, it, because those are multifamily, and so we're not counting multifamily, only single-family residential. State Code eleven is single-family residential, so it would uh be impacted by the potential seventy. New lots and the creation of those homes.
Okay. So it's ten percent of host, yeah, so you could go another three.
Right, other, you have something you need to. You need to come up, though, yeah, because this is a hearing, we actually need your name and address.
On that entire two oh two Prospect Street, so I'm a little confused, um B and Bs are also. She said.
Yeah.
B and Bs are are, I mean, um AUs can also be used as B and Bs, does this include them as well?
Yeah, the total number of B and Bs.
So so somebody has a B, that doesn't, in their A D, that does not, we can't answer that either, but you want to see stuff, you will reset, you will have to reapply.
Reapply.
Go into the lottery or the life or how we.
All B and Bs, and and they were gonna, there was a, they were gonna exempt. The ones within a house from that total number, but they didn't, so it is. All right, Lilith. See your hand up, or is that from before?
Sorry, I am muted, um I've been following this for for several months and. Some people know it's a sort of a big issue for me, because we had, we have a three-bedroom uh B and B across us that was non-compliant for many years. And the whole neighborhood had to band together to deal with that, so anyway, um I have two thoughts for the council to consider. And I'd like to share them tonight, the first one is, there's nothing in this plan that limits. The um concentration of bed and breakfast on any given street. And I asked the uh planning commission about it, and they said they couldn't sort of figure out how to do that somehow, but. You know, you might wanna consider doing that, even if it's just not right next door to each other, anything that would. Help a neighborhood um not have too dense of a concentration of bed and breakfast, so that's my first comment. And my second one is something I've been thinking about, um in terms of the language. That says that having a B and B, I think this is correct, right, Lilith, is to augment income? Is that correct? Don't you have the word augment in there?
We have supplement household income.
Yes, supplement, so. Six percent for bed and breakfast is not unusual, and I think I would probably favor five percent over four. If we just had one bedroom in the units, so we'd end up with less bedrooms, but more people able to. Quote, supplement their income by having only one bedroom, less parking requirements, less impact. And if you have two bedrooms, you could make up to a hundred thousand dollars a year, and all of a sudden, that's the business, you're, you know, your home is your business. It's not just supplemental, so anyways, something I've been thinking about, and I just wanted to throw it out there, so five percent. And only one bedroom, I think it meets our goals a little bit better. And it helps people have one room, live here, and then have a second job in town, I know some people that do that, actually.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? Again, if you, if questions come up, in the meantime, you can send them in to us as well, because this is also gonna keep you. Um but I'm not seeing any other hands right now. So we will continue this here, we're, wrap this up for now, continue it on to our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, and. Hopefully, we'll be ready to address it and take action.
Mister Mayor, if I can just make one comment?
Sure.
I'd like to commend Lilith and the planning commission for all their hard work on this, this has been a really big hot ticket item. With a lot of tendrils associated with it, they've had a lot of varying different conversations under the umbrella of. Better managing bed and breakfasts, and I would like to thank them for all their hard work.
Yes.
Over the last handful of months.
Yes.
And is there a planning or a uh, yeah, a planning commission meeting between now and our next meeting?
No.
No, so they wouldn't have a chance to peruse any of the questions before we voted?
No, but you've got the opportunity to.
They've already sent it to us.
They've sent it, right.
Okay, so that's a send back thing, that possibly.
For what? What Rhona had suggested?
Yeah.
Make that change on our own, we wouldn't necessarily.
Okay, okay, I thought you had to, okay, thanks.
All right, we will then continue the hearing to next time and move on to action. Um the quarterly budget amendment, and that's Chandel.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all this very short quarterly budget amendment includes uh several items that were approved by yourself over the last quarter. As well as promised, we are taking into account the financial policy for personnel reserves that we've been. Wanting to incorporate for quite some time, we just haven't had the time to get that one in. Uh I will note that overall, between all the funds that I have identified, the payroll reserve, the total there is fifty-six thousand. Of seventy-five, which is twenty-five percent of the city's overall liability on the books. As of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. First, sick and vacation liability of all employees combined. How I determine which fund takes the hit is based on the employees' distributions within those particular funds. There's one, two, two items within the water fund. That are, one is a kind of a correction, the other one is a correction, so the first one is a withdrawal of two hundred thousand on the revenue side. For the USDA RD loan proceeds, this was, Tom had brought. The loan from Public Works Board rather than USDA, and when I added the Public Works Board loan for the full six hundred and eighty K. I didn't notice that we had two hundred K earmarked, we just didn't know what funder it was. So we've basically double budgeted the revenue side by two hundred K, so we're removing that. And then right below that is the water main transmission wells to icicle. Uh the council did approve six hundred and eighty K, but we did have a line item budgeted at two, so we're only adopting four hundred and eighty K on that side. Any question?
I have a question, but not on that particular thing, but it is on the budget.
On the, on the, if it's on the budget, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, so I was.
I, I just wanted to, um, so I was clear. When two hundred thousand dollars is taken out once a year um to put into like the affordable housing, did that, when did that start?
So the first budget, we've got six hundred and twenty-three, so it would have been two hundred and twenty-two and two hundred and twenty-one. Because we have not spent it, so it would have been the first year was twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one. So and, and we said, um, that was a, okay, what we had six hundred thousand to go to mend. Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
And then, so now we have no thing in there, but next year then. Okay.
Yeah, we, so from a budget perspective, we're in a biennial process. So if we don't spend it in twenty-three, we can still spend it in twenty-four. So you do have six hundred earmarked in twenty-three, and you have two hundred earmarked in twenty-four. If you don't use any of it before December of this year, you can use the full eight in twenty twenty-four.
I see, okay. But we've voted not to do that.
You have not used it yet.
We had six hundred.
We committed six hundred. Okay, yeah, I just wanted. Thanks for talking about affordable housing.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt coordinate sixteen eighty-two. Note. Sorry, sixteen eighty-one quarterly budget amendment.
Second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Clint. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. We're skipping ten down to eleven. Dedication of sidewalk, Lilith.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, this project has been in the work for several years. The property owner has changed hands. And that was part of the, the extended timeline. But also, um, the work just needed to be redone several times. So on the corner of Mill Street and Highway Two, um, it's also on the south side of the highway, sometimes called Commercial Street. Uh, so you'll see, see, and if you look in the documents, I, I've seen it both ways. Um, but any case, the legal description is defined in your bill of sale. What we're looking for at this time, the property owner has agreed to dedicate a portion of sidewalk that they rebuilt to the city. So the property is free of all encumbrances. The improvements have been paid for. The review by Public Works has shown that the work is done consistent with our adopted standards. And at this time, we're requesting that the city council authorize the mayor to uh sign and agree to the deed and dedication of the public right of way.
I, I'm not a good map reader, and this map made, to me, made it look like was on Mill Street on that side, so I drove up and down Mill Street three times. Then I thought, well, maybe it's across the way, so I drove across the highway, still didn't see anything that looked like this, so I went to City Hall. And Andrea said, I'll go with you. So I know where.
Nice.
So thank you. Yeah, above and beyond. I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to sign and record the bill of sale and the final deed and dedication associated with the Enchantment Lodges LLC sidewalk.
Second. By hands, seconded by Sharon. Any other comments? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Professional Services Agreement, HDR.
Thank you, Mayor Cory. Let's get a good evening. Uh, what, before you, at this moment, council is a professional services agreement between the city and HDR Engineering for the purposes of conducting a rate study. Uh, this rate study is going to work at all our enterprise funds with the exception of parking. So that's water, wastewater, garbage, stormwater. Um, I indicated in the study session a couple of the highlights. Uh, I do want to make note that in the write-up, a typical rate study is for five years. We are pursuing a six-year rate study, and that's because it aligns with a biennial budget. So that's why there's an additional year than what's typical per se. Um, so again, the, the main components of this rate study are to make sure that we're up to, or following the best practices. Um, updating those system development charges, because as I indicated in the study session, they're quite out of date. So two thousand eight was the last time we adopted those. And those are based on actual capital improvements, so we want to be recouping some of those costs in terms of the investments backing in the system. Uh, HDR again did look at them in twenty-eleven and found they sufficient at that time, however, inflation has occurred since twenty-eleven.
Since twenty-eleven, really?
But nonetheless, uh, here we are today. And so a couple of things with the water system, um, council, I'll report on this during my report, but you're aware of our Asian water system, and we are having to perform some urgent quasi-emergency replacements in our water system. So when we go through this utility, this utility rate study, um, we're going to make sure that we have this discretionary pot of money, so we could start adhering to best practices, and that is replacing our mainline utilities one percent per year. So water would be approximately fifteen hundred feet per year. Uh, wastewater's a little bit more, but we just lined our, a lot of our collection systems, so not too concerned about sewer, but primarily water. We want to start systematically replacing our distribution system, just piece by piece. And so they'll all be evaluated and tucked into a proposed rate structure that the city council will, will ultimately review and consider and adopt. Uh, and again, the pursuance of a conservation of rate structure, so HDR is going to propose four different scenarios in specifically for our water fund or water rate structure. So they'll look at, you know, they're going to use our AMI smart meter, so we could look at, this is just hypothetical at this point, HDR is going to do that later, but we could have different tiers to, you know, pay higher for more usage. We have off each hour similar to like electricity in some areas of the country where hey, if you water at night, it's less of a charge, and if you water at peak demand, higher. So we'll be able to evaluate all those. In terms of the timeline, this process is going to take a while, so the projected date of completion is October of twenty twenty-four. It'll give adequate time to adopt rates prior to twenty-five. Uh, scope of work includes two presentations to the city council and a community's location. So if that makes sense, I'm having to.
After, after this rate is adjusted based on the study, when would be our next potential rate study? Six years again?
They'll, they'll give us a suite of uh rates to consider over a six-year period, and we can.
So every six years, we pretty much do a rate study.
Okay. And the rate study, is that just for water?
Just water, sewer, stormwater.
Okay. And so affecting monthly rates?
Correct.
What was the cost of our last rate study?
Oh, that's a good question.
Hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars feels high, but maybe I just have no context.
I'm going to guess we were around eighty without looking, and we did not have SDCs in there. The SDCs is a heavy lift.
SDCs.
Uh, keep in mind, we also have a little bit of grant on this. Uh, Tom did acquire twenty-three thousand for the water funds portion from Chilean County and Department of Ecology.
For the icicle work.
I should go work.
Nice. And, uh, and again, there, the primary driver there is the conservation-based rates. And in terms of, thank you, Councilwoman Hesper from Miami, in terms of budget implications, this contract proposal is a not, has a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have a budget at a hundred and twenty-three thousand spread across the enterprise funds.
The garbage is just for the commercial?
Correct.
Uh, no, it's, it's commercial and multifamily.
Okay.
Oh, right.
We still do all the garbage for three or more units.
Intertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve the selection of HDR and authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement between the city of Leavenworth and HDR for conducting a utility rate study with an established not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Moved by Marco, seconded by Jason. Any other questions?
I had a question.
With, um, the, the structure, the replacement of the water, like maybe, um, the one percent of here. And then, and previous sites, you know, were, uh, said that we have like twenty, yeah, two hundred blocks. So you'd be like, make a couple of blocks a year, is that kind of a, a ballpark?
Yeah, that's, it's, I mean, blocks range by length of the city, but yeah, so it's approximately a thousand feet here. Again, that's what we're going to pursue. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a chance that if we look at the rates, it could be just infeasible from the rate sample. We don't know, but we're going to explore. And service line replacements is a priority too.
Yeah, I, I know that one, because, um, you mentioned, so we don't, the, the size of our water, size getting old, so they're not sizeable, but the, the, um, the wells actually normal now.
Yeah, then projects underway. That's the transmission made in Icicle Road, so we have the design fund in some ways.
And that will get them through some points. So then, uh, when you start to replace the, the one percent every year, how would you deal with, um, you know, the water, large water comes one thing, but the, uh, the smaller lines, bigger lines, is that what that means? You know, like, will you replace, there'll be bigger lines, like there's some of them into smaller lines.
Now, the staff pressure is still the same regardless of pipe diameter typically, so there's little impact. So for example, at Stafford, we, we tied in a new eight-inch duckle iron to a really deficient each and a half gallon ice line. No issue.
Uh, Pharrell did our study. So HDR's done the last two, Pharrell did the one before that.
Hey, any other questions?
There's one more on the screen.
Oh, Rhona.
And Pharrell only did the SDC.
That's right.
They did not do a utility rate study. That's not their specialty.
I thought they did it where we, you know, that they, they dropped the UC to seven fifty from fifteen thousand.
No, that was HDR.
Okay. Rhona?
Yeah, this is related. It's something I'm trying to clear up in my own mind as I read information. Um, because we're losing, depends on what study you look at, but let's say twenty-four to twenty-five percent of water through leakage, freshwater going to our houses. Um, is there a, a time period in which that has to get fixed or improved based on any kind of um rules from the state or the county?
So good question. So the Department of Health requires us to have um, kind of an adaptive management plan for any distribution system leakage over ten percent. However, the Department of Health, it's my understanding, that program is being audited by the state auditor as we speak, so um, in terms of effectiveness, the Department of Health hasn't really uh required the city to pursue that. Uh, with that being said, um, the likelihood of, the main source of our distribution system leakage is likely tied to service lines. And as I indicated above, though, our intention is to pursue a service line replacement programming and have it evaluated in this rate study. Because we did a mainline detection study last year and found there was no big indicator of large leaks on our transmission distribution system. Um, Nob Hill out in the Yakima Basin had a very similar distribution system leakage situation, situation, and they found the galvanized service lines, which we primarily have here at Level One for the source of their issue. And just for example, the ski hill sidewalk project, we replaced service lines because we poured new sidewalk and um, a few of those service lines were, were leaking, they just weren't surfacing.
And you couldn't get those on the acoustic test? Okay, so the acoustic test has a lot of limitations.
Yeah, so the acoustic test that we did was just focusing on mainline, just the distribution, that transmission system.
Got you.
We can use acoustics for service lines, which it's more time-consuming. We have the equipment to do.
Right, but the service lines represent a smaller, they, they're not the major piece.
Collectively, they are. Likely, collectively.
Okay, so that's where you get now, okay.
And, and, and just having the assumption of that, it's, it's we're, uh, being more proactive, we just start replacing, because we know that the galvanized service lines are deficient.
Based on, yeah.
And what we found here.
What we found here, we have one right in front of my house.
Yep, that was a service line.
That was a service line.
Thanks for being a detective.
That was your fault.
I, thanks for answering that. I actually don't know what the different kinds of lines are, so could you define a service line?
Sure, so it's, it's, it's similar terminology, I guess, with electricity. So you have transmission, distribution, and then service lines. So transmission lines are those main pipes that bring water from our source, capacity from our sources, so like our surface water plant in our well field. And then once you get into town, after the reservoirs, they branch off into distribution lines, and then the the water line actually serves single-family residents and dwellings are the service lines.
Huh, okay, thanks.
Typically larger, further out, getting smaller, going in. But not necessarily the case in some of our larger ones. Yeah.
All right, so any other questions? Not ready? The rule, oh. All those in favor of the professional services agreement? See your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're ready for reports. Sharon?
Okay, um, on the twenty-seventh of September, I helped with backpacking, and once again, Wednesday mornings at nine, anyone who's got some time to spare, we'd love to have you. We're, we're up to, uh, climbing up close to a hundred, uh, packed, packed, packed bags at time. Um, I attended the Zoom pool meeting along with Jason and some other folks and, uh, what's that guy's name, last name, Brian?
Decker.
Brian Decker is kind of the chairperson. They're actually having a meeting tonight, always sit here um, to um, kind of brainstorm ideas for the new pool. Um, on To- Oktoberfest, I participated in the parade and the beer tapping, and Carl was our fellow at the, uh, Fest Hall, and then Jason walloped it in the afternoon at the, um, gazebo. And, um, then, uh, last week, or last weekend, or if I got this further down. Okay, I got a little further down. That, we had a museum meeting on October third, and, um, museum is definitely on the move and coming up with different ideas for, um, a celebration that's coming up around the corner that you'll get noticed of. And on the fourth, um, was backpacking again, and I attended the, um, uh, Chubbsick Wildfire Steering Committee at the Fire Hall. And, um, then the Chamber on the fifth. The Chamber is a fascinating group. I love to go to their meetings. All those young, um, you know, they're young folks on there, young, younger folks. And they all are, all of them are, just come up with great ideas, and they're so smart, and Selby gave a great report. I love Selby's reports. And then, um, on the fifth, also, um, attended the playground group at Osborne. And we are kind of getting under some deadlines. If we want it, the playground finished with all the equipment on it by, uh, next, the end of next summer, then, um, we've got to make some decisions, and the the lady that's kind of, uh, if they had of it from the group that we're working with is going to be at our next meeting. And then the candidate forum, I thought that was really interesting. It's, I kind of felt like the questions were all so similar. I don't know if you felt that way, um, uh.
I did.
Okay, yeah. And so it kind of seemed like it was hard to come up with different answers since they seem so similar. And then on the seventh, um, uh, on Saturday, went to the Oktoberfest, and, um, Carl, um, once again, hit the uh, beer tub, tub, whatever it's called. At the Fest Hall, and then Selby annihilated it. At, at the gazebo, he hit it, they said, hit it again, whacko. So it was really kind of fun. We dodged the beer, though, we got out of the way. And then the Fest Hall meeting, um, was, uh, yesterday, and, um, Selby and, who else is a chair, chair of that?
T-Bor's chair.
T-Bor, T-Bor and Selby, and they'll sell their report. And then I just wanted to say quickly that Lucas, little Lucas the Lionheart um, was given, uh, the, uh, Make Your Wish um, trip, and so he is in Florida at, um, Disney World right now as we speak, and, um, it is amazing what they um, do with, for these kids. I mean, it's an all-expense trip. Um, they give them a credit card with so much money to buy different items there. All the rides are free. They just have to say they're a wish kid, they have a shirt, and they get to move to the front of the line, and, um, I, yeah, it's, it's amazing what all they do, and Lucas got to sit. I get, it's, it's amazing what all they do. And Lucas got to sit in the, um, the co- the pilot seat or whatever they call it. And, um, actually reach up and press a button. And, um, it's the, the sad thing is the reason that you, you get the, the trip, but it's, um, it's an amazing thing that they Make Your Wish Foundation does.
How old is he now, Sharon?
He's five.
Wow.
Which is when they said that you have to start worrying.
So anyway.
So anyway, he's there and having a great time and, um, Halloween is his favorite holiday. So that's why they're going in October because they put all the hell places full on Halloween decorations and Halloween parties and what have you. So.
Right.
Thank you for listening.
Squid.
Uh, I attended the candidates forum as well. I appreciated everyone being there and sharing their views. I'm with Sharon. I mean, all the questions were very, very uniform. I get why. It keeps things on track. Um, it would have been nice to see some follow up questions, but I totally get why they weren't able to do that. At any rate, great resource for the community. Appreciate, um, time and efforts of all of those folks involved. That concludes my report.
Jason, Sharon kind of covered mine.
Did I?
No, we had, uh, friends of the pool kickoff meeting on the twenty eighth. I think there were seventeen people and I know at least three more that wanted to attend. So a lot of interest. Uh, a lot, it's a little disorienting having a bunch of people come on with different levels of background about the project, but uh, I think it is the right path forward. I think the first order of business is sort of figuring out people's strengths and skills and interests. And then they're gonna sort of do more due diligence on the location because there's some people would like to see it happen at Osborne. So kind of check that, figure that out, get consensus, and then explore options for your own pool, the type, and kind of come up with a preferred alternative. All this is without consultants and help. Um, but I see the P R S A as being able to support this group as they move forward to some, to the extent possible. Yeah, and Sharon mentioned their meeting again tonight, which is kind of disappointing because we wanted to be there. Uh, I attended Oktoberfest, um, on the thirtieth and tapped the keg. That was really fun. And had a great time with, uh, the, the mayor and Sharon and, uh, Troy and others. And that concludes my report. Thank you. I'm gonna be missing the next meeting. So let you guys know that. Can I get excused?
I attended Locals Night Oktoberfest and I commend the Chamber for running a very fun event, very engaging, had a lot of fun there. Um, and, uh, this last week, I attended the candidate forum and participated at the beginning, but, um, uh, it was really great to be able to sit and listen to all of the rest of the candidates answer the questions. I think that it was a really great opportunity for our community to uh, hear about the priorities of the council members running for position. And I really enjoyed that time. Um, and, uh, that's about it. Other than the roundabout at Isicle Road is complete and Lake Transit will be hosting with the city, a ribbon cutting on, um, Wednesday, the eighteenth at eight thirty in the morning. So it's a small little space, but there's going to be a, a ribbon cutting.
Is the ribbon cutting in the middle of the roundabout?
I don't know where Lake Transit's on hold. Probably off to the side, but I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
You do by zoom. Marco. Well, I'll self-tail on that ribbon cutting. I'm fascinated by the abstract artwork on that roundabout. This beautiful, like weird like posts with these arrows on them. It's really amazing art. Like it really signifies who we are in love. It's just amazing. Um, so you can see, I really wish we had some nice art there. But we'll, we can get to that. I did go to the candidates forum and I thought it was really fun. It was really, uh, engaging for the candidates. Uh, I thought it was well managed by Bob Uger. And, uh, yeah, I thought it was time well spent. So I'm glad the community came. I'd like, I would have loved to see more. I think there's only like a hundred and fifty people there maybe.
Oh, I don't think there was that many.
Yeah, but yeah, it'd be good to see. I mean.
It was fifty.
Yeah.
Was it hybrid? Did people zoom in or not?
I don't know that happens. Yeah. And we have eight hundred voters. And then nine hundred voters. Okay. Yeah, it'd be great to be able to reach more of them. Anyway, that's my report.
Same. I was there, participated. It was fun. It was engaging and fun. And I, I, exactly. I wish more people would have gone, but a lot of people didn't know or just forgot. It was, so it wasn't promoted and kept on going, but anyways. Uh, we did have a festival committee meeting yesterday morning and just got an update from, uh, Ashley on the condition of the rentals of the Fest Hall and so that there's more and more smaller groups for activity weekdays, and there will continue to be more because the Riverside Center in Kashmir, was it twenty twenty four, I think she said? They are going to move their library into it and no longer rent that facility for the public. Right? So we're, everything, anybody that's inquiring now, she's pushing it to the Fest Hall. And so we will have continued activity. The revenues are starting to come in at a it's a slow pace, but the, the numbers are getting there and it's getting better. So, you know, COVID did this and then but, uh, there was a couple of policy changes that we talked about. And so there's a new smart key to open the doors. So when somebody rents a Fest Hall, they get a key. And that key is programmed to go off at midnight. So they have to be on. If that key doesn't come back, it's three hundred dollars to them. And so that's what we added yesterday. Uh, there was a couple of other things where Sue had run into an issue then. It used to be that you had to be out of the Fest Hall by midnight. Then it went to eleven. Now it's ten, which gives anybody that hasn't two hours to clean up, get all their stuff out and be out of the facility so that the Fest Hall team could come in and do what they need to do. In the past, what was happening is they'd be there at midnight. Well, they wouldn't get out to one or one thirty. So that policy says if you don't get out, we keep your deposit. And so to avoid that friction, it's gone back to ten o'clock or it's gone to ten o'clock. Hopefully it'll avoid Sue having to catch heat for saying, tell somebody, you don't get your deposit back. The Fest Hall's moving along at a fairly good pace. The Summer Theater did come and they are going to bring a proposal. They would like to have it for six weeks last summer. So.
Twenty five, no, twenty five.
Or twenty five years, sorry, twenty five, yeah.
Twenty five. No, twenty.
So, but, yeah.
Great.
Five weeks.
Just five weeks, yeah. That's it. All right. Oh, and there was no what, lap meeting? I was gonna say you weren't there.
All right. Real quick, um, a couple of things this week. Matt, yes, yesterday had lunch with Representative Gainer and he brought along members of the local government committee, which is one of the places that deals with housing um, in this legislature. So we sat right here and had lunch and talked and got to bend their ear about Leavenworth and our specific issues and um, interestingly enough, he says, you get, get a bill, bring it to us, we'll get it going. They love the idea. So, um, and, and the local government committee was represented. We had the chair there. And the other committee that it would have to go to is the finance committee. On the local government committee is the finance chair. And she says, bring it. So um, there's more, um, yeah, it gets me excited just to hear people say, okay, makes sense to us. Um, and then at the end of the week, we, Association of Washington Cities, I'll be hosting, um, a mayor's exchange. Mayors from around the state will be they have a month, a yearly, I'm sorry, an annual gathering of just exchanging ideas with mayors and it will be in Leavenworth and Thursday night and all day Friday. So I'll include a walk through our downtown as well and talk about what we did after COVID and all of that stuff. So that'll be fun. And that's my report.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, on September twenty eighth, we held our first ever all staff professional development day at Isicle Village Resort. And I think by all accounts, it was, it was a huge success. Um, we spent the morning with Hannah Butler doing some team building. We spent two hours at the adventure department. Came back, had lunch for team building, then we played some putt putt golf. And it was a really good day of, of, uh, team building and, and, and professional development. And fun.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I worked with Tom Graff draw on a draft lease for the golf club to review and I'm waiting for their input. Uh, N C W Library sent us their draft maintenance agreement for continued occupation of City Hall. Um, and we will be reviewing and meeting with N C W Libraries before bringing this to council for consideration. Um, and one additional policy that the Fest Hall Oversight Committee added, um, was a provision that if the cops get called due to an altercation at your event, you surrender your deposit to the city.
That's right. It's all about deposits.
Well, we have to pay the police when I show up.
Exactly. That's all. Thank you.
Should I do?
Uh, just a heads up, M R S C is embarking upon a new program that they're looking into for next year. It's gonna be a five day full training course for training and retaining the finance directors and, uh, clerk treasurers across our state, mostly targeted at small communities. So they reached out to me and asked if I would be able to be a potential location for this event because they'll have multiples across the state, but Leavenworth being central hits both east and west side. And so they, uh, definitely said, yeah, we can look at accommodation potentially here in our chambers or Fest Hall or even at the fire hall. But it's kind of a really cool concept that they're embarking upon this. It's not a certification program yet. But if it works out well and people are interested, I could see how that might turn into something for future funding.
All right, Tom.
Okay, a couple of brief updates. Uh, my, the September Public Works report is in the packet tab thirteen. Let me know if you have any questions. Bear update, so bear activity is very high right now due to the time of year, privately going into their higher native state. So they, the bears, they're trying to pack as many calories in as they can. So we, again, we acquired fifty Kodiak bear resistant totes thanks to defenders of wildlife. We've deployed forty one of them, twenty four at the Cascade School District, remaining seventeen have have been deployed throughout downtown. Post Hotel, Root Loose Pizza, La Hablina, Bear Bear, Wood Brewing. So we have nine. We have nine remaining. And they will be deployed in areas that we, that have high, high risk areas. Further, I met with, uh, Washington State Department Fish and Wildlife biologist, Joe Bridges and Rich Bosley, along with their enforcement officer Sergeant Will Smith yesterday to share bear wise updates. Um, I requested what we could do to help fish and wildlife in the short term. Obviously, long term bear resistant totes. Um, Fish and Wildlife has been working with waste management. Uh, waste management has approximately three thousand accounts residents inside city limits in nine eighty two six area, zip code rather. Um, there's three thousand residents and it's a capital outlay of one point five million just to replace everyone's tote with a bear resistant tote. And they, and Fish and Wildlife feels that that is the number one best practice that, that could help with the issue. Obviously, waste management is not looking to donate one point five million. So further discussions to come, community wide.
It's gotta be a grant for that.
Yeah. In town, there's about eight, eight hundred accounts. It's a three hundred fifty thousand dollar capital outlay to, to get waste management to if, that everyone's in, in city limits, uh, bear resistance. Although one, I asked the request and, and what they said, short term is to assist with messaging in particular, asking the community to secure trash cans prior to pickup day. So just because you have a trash can not by the street, bears are still getting in it. So even if you could bungee cord them, somehow scratch, strap them closed and then putting them out day of pickup, not the day before or prior. Um, one thing in Fish and Wildlife, Officer indicated negligence with regard to a trash can is a thousand dollar fine. To Fish and Wildlife. So they're, and they're really amping up the kind of outreach on that.
Can you explain that just a little bit more?
So if you, uh, if you are negligent with your trash management, in other words, uh, for example, there's a short term rental on Commercial Street that has a bear can through Fish and Wildlife, or excuse me, Waste Management, but when they leave on the weekends, they have too much trash and it's usually heat, which defeats the purpose of it.
Yeah.
So that would be an example of negligence. So that property owner could be subjected to a thousand dollar fine through Fish and Wildlife. So feeding, feeding wildlife is what, is what.
So if my garbage stand is out by the street overnight and a bear gets it, then they're gonna come and I'm gonna have to pay a thousand dollars?
If, if negligence is cruel.
So is that negligence?
I unfortunately can't answer that. I can't have Fish and Wildlife, but if you have a heat trash can that's not secure and
they're not gonna get you for that. Yeah, and the sign says come and get it.
You would get a warning. They're, they're issuing warnings, yes. Uh, again, that was a request from Fish and Wildlife. I share that with. Um, Andy and I are meeting with Public Works Board to review our mercy of loan application on our children's ID. Uh, this is associated with the critical Pine Street water main replacement. Again, we had a leak down the water main on Pine Street in between Titus and Bird. We were unable to stop the leak. So we just the crew slowed the leak to a dull roar, backfilled the whole seven hundred foot section of pipe to suspicion. It's old steel and it is in dire need of replacement. So we're gonna go after some emergency loan funding to the Public Works Board. Brief discussions, we are eligible, so we're gonna present our case on the nineteenth, keeping our fingers crossed. Um, R H two and Andy worked together and put together a big package for that on expedited big, big package. And so we went small works throughout bids to do on the thirteenth, just like this coming Friday.
You said Pine Street?
Pine Street, oh. Sorry.
Pine Street and Mill?
No, Pine Street, Titus is between Titus and Bird.
Sorry, Titan.
The old section.
Yeah, the old.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry.
So is it just leaking now?
It is.
And, okay.
It's actively leaking.
Yeah.
Uh, a couple more updates. Councilor Aurelio has expressed interest in the Public Works Campus slash Bleed Tour. I plan to host two campus tours in the coming weeks for all interested council members. So just let me know and we'll do it in two, a couple of different batches. So we don't have to notice it. So we can keep it pretty happy to give you a tour of the, of the digs, as they say.
Yeah.
Last but not least, I attended a W A Fall Conference in Lanchy last week. An interesting statistic I want to leave with council is that for every one person entering the public works field, seven of primarily due to just mass retirements.
Wow.
Oh, I thought you guys were just getting smarter. They didn't need as many.
That's really hard to, but we're pulling staff, however, we're expecting tomorrow. So.
Great. So well done. Yeah, it's tough to find good people.
It's tough. Thank you, Matt. Good. That was my report.
Um, okay, we're ready to move into an executive.
Mayor, can we, can we briefly mention the community engagement night coming up?
Oh, yes. We've got a community engagement night on the first of November at the Fest Hall, five to eight.
Be great for the community to know about it and, and come and engage. Um, they're great kind of public forum opportunities. So.
Yep, we have a lot of things on.
I don't know all of the, by title, but I think we have about eight different booths, probably.
Yeah, I was just looking for my photo. It keeps on growing because people like Clint keep on wanting to come. Clint, did you give us a, a topic? Uh, there are a number that we're considering. So there's, there will be good stuff to talk about there.
Yeah, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then nine, nine, probably ten by the time we're done.
Ten different tables? Awesome.
Next, for the next engagement.
Yeah, on the first.
Some people make a whole.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Come early and stay long, Paulie.
Yeah, there's probably gonna be pizza and kids. About like two hundred people, Joe.
Yes, we will have Kitty Corner and bubble pizza.
Yeah, it's awesome, right?
All right.
All right. All right. We are going to move into executive session. Um, there's two reasons for this. R C W forty two, thirty one, ten, one D, property selection, cider acquisition, and also R C W forty two, thirty one, ten, one, the one pending litigation, a total of thirty minutes for those two.
All right.
We made a motion to recess into executive session with a smooth and second.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And make note that no action will be taken after these. So we'll just be coming out to adjourn.
So we'll come out at nine twenty four?
Nine twenty four, come out.
Do it.
We've stopped, right?
Not yet. No, we will now.
We are done. We are done. entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
On paper, let me see.
Who should we give these to?
We have to leave these here.
Oh, that's right.